Good evening and welcome to the sixth meeting of the Planning Board for fiscal year 2024. At this time, I would now like to call the meeting to order and begin by introductions of the Planning Board and the staff. We can begin with Jim.
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Sean Fahy, member.
Danielle Field, member.
And Mayor Nepal serving as Chair. We will begin with our administrative items. We first have the approval of our minutes that were sent out. Cheryl did do some edits to the 3rd and the 10th. I have not had a chance to read them, I apologize.
I did it either.
And you have not either. So if that, could I have a motion to defer, is it okay if we defer the minutes to our, let's say to the 28th, our next meeting?
Make the motion to defer the minutes to the 28th?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So we now have the discussion of our next meeting dates. We have a regular scheduled meeting for September 28th is the next regular scheduled meeting. But we do have a meeting, which Tim will highlight and talk about, that we have on the 25th is going to be the Public Forum, which the public is invited to, 7:00 PM, in the Keys, not the--
6:30.
6:30 in the Keys Room. And that will be on the MBTA Communities Public Forum. So everyone's invited to join in person. And I believe there will be a Zoom link too, Tim, on that?
Will that--
Is it Zoom also?
No.
No, it's all in person at the Keys Room at the Milton Public Library, so--
Say it again?
That is the 25th.
9:25.
9:25. Thank you. And--
Appreciate it.
Yes, so that will be our, the next scheduled meeting. There's also, I will just say, an open space and recreation public meeting also in the Keys Room. Is that at 7:00 PM?
That'll be 6:30 to 8:30 on Monday.
On Monday, the 18th.
We have a hard stop at 8:30 in the Keys Room, so we try to start a half an hour early.
6:30 to 8:30, and that is if anyone is interested in hearing about the open space and recreation plan, that's also on the website if anybody wants to look. Next, we have our staff update. Tim?
Working on, you'll be talking about tonight, so.
Perfect, sounds great. And at this time, Citizens Speak, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak this evening, please come and join us. Welcome. You can come, actually, and come and sit. And if you'd like to sit in front of the microphone so people can hear you. Thank you. And just say your name for the record and your address, please.
Jean Bronk, and I live at 40 Caroline Drive.
Great, welcome, Jean.
Thank you. So now I do my little speech.
Now you can talk, yes. Good welcome. I hope you don't feel intimidated being here, so.
Thank you for the chance to come and speak before you, and also to thank you for the service that you all do for the town. I'm here, oh, I have lived in Milton, fortunately, for over 20 years. And I'm here today to ask you to consider having enacted the MBTA law. So I, let's see, I'm sorry, I have to do notes, I'm not good at doing this.
That's okay, that's okay.
I believe our future in Milton and the community, the Commonwealth requires that there will be fewer trucks and cars on the road, there just won't be room, and top-quality public transit, which seems an impossibility. But to me, those things are both difficult to achieve, but it's essential, I think. Those improvements and maybe more housing for workers, so that that will help our economic health. So you know where I'm going with this. So let's not make density a dirty word. Let's think instead of safety and comfort as our goals. I, along with others, understand our present zoning law needs to mesh better with present and future needs of the town. So I urge the Board to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Good. Anyone online?
We have Diana Agostino.
Okay. We can bring in--
I actually don't have, can I be made a host?
Yes, if we can make Tim a host and then welcome Diane. All right, you got it? Are you host? Good, all right. And while Tim's getting that sort of teed up, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for Citizens Speak? Yes? Oh, she's good. Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, we did get, we'll get you to next. All right, Diane?
Good evening.
Yes. Good evening.
Whoops, sorry, I keep hearing backup there. It asked me to unmute. The one thing I would ask before I make my comments is, could not hear anything at 50% of what the prior speaker said, and at the last meeting, we could not hear Planning Board members. So if every speaker really could speak into the mics, I know the town planner spoke earlier, could not hear him as well, because I'm viewing on Zoom, and I'm sure many others. Also, the closed caption transcript is not working. I just wanted, is it Tom or Tim, whoever's handling it. Thank you very much for this opportunity, Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member, as well as a former Select Person, Chair of the Commission on Disability, and I think it's 45 years as a Town Meeting Member now. I'm seeking on two topics, hope to be very brief. One of the topics before you is a new application for the assisted living residence at 111 Highland Street, which I believe is categorized as under Article 97 Wetlands. The Planning Board, in previous years, and it's documented in the meetings, did agree, and upon advice, advice of Town Council, with the residents, and it's in your minutes, prior minutes, you weren't all on the Board at that time, not to allow an assisted living residence to be built on that site. Mass General Chapter 19D, as well as the Rules and Regulations CMR 651, identify that the construction of this developer would in fact need to be certified as an assisted living residence, and it would be termed a special care resident unit. The actual law itself is all about assisted living residences, the regulations get into other terms, but the term memory care unit is a marketing term. And I'm very concerned that a prior Planning Board, upon advice of Town Council, and it's in your minutes, had let the residents who live downstream of that property be confirmed they would not build an assisted living residence, which it is. I also understand, but I did not witness it, so I'm not 100% sure, that the Concom voted Tuesday night to approve this development without reviewing any of the pending hydrologist studies, I believe your Board has asked for, and without even replying as a courtesy to the attorney that the Spafford Coalition had hired. The Concom has previously cited in some of their approvals that their rules and regulations, which are not certified by the Town Clerk in any documents in the town, because I've checked into that, holds that they have a right to do things for the good of the town. That does not hold any legal standing in any federal, state, or local law to say that we, the Concom, can agree to build anything on wetlands or subdivide different areas just because we feel it's for the good of the town. So in keeping with past Planning Board concessions, I would say that the one thing this Planning Board needs to keep in mind is that this area of the town is downstream, and we don't need a Lemonster situation. Those poor people in Lemonster, who knows how long it's going to take for them to once again be able to return to the homes that have been washed away. The last month has certainly taught us the power of water and the need for wetlands. The second topic is on the Milton's Planning Board doing their due diligence, which I greatly appreciate, and you should, there should be no complaints about the time it's taking, because as we all know, while the Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, which deals with multifamily communities near MBTA stations, was signed into law when Governor, right before Governor Baker left, the issue is, on August 17th of this year, last month, the guidelines changed. And it's very interesting that only 12 towns, including Milton, are required to make this decision on the zoning, and I'm not saying whether I'm for or against, but to make this decision on the zoning by December 31st of this year, with the approval of the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, it actually is an impossibility. It's, there's just not enough dates there. So I appreciate the work you're doing with the consultants. I hope that you receive from the consultants the information that you have requested, especially, there's a concern, yes, there could be a penalty of not doing, or not creating these zones, but we can also endure a financial penalty by not properly taking on these zones and how many units we actually allow. So I greatly appreciate, and I understand, the only one with authority and charge has per the Town Council's response to your request for clarification regarding the Select Board's submission of an article, is that you, the Select Board can initiate an idea of a zoning, but only your Board has the authority to create, amend, or repeal. So if in fact the Select Board's article went forward, Town Council did not fully reply in detail to the fact that it would not be following the laws. And I greatly commend the resiliency that the five of you have to do your due diligence, your homework. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing, and I big pat on the back to all of you.
Thank you, Diane, thank you very much. Anyone, next, yes, please come forward, thanks, welcome. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Matt Marong, 136 Elliott Street. So, good evening, Chair Hall and Milton Planning Board. I'm here again to update my concerns, this time regarding the process and the potential outcomes from recent Planning Board actions related to the MBTA Communities Act. The Board voted last week to send a letter drafted by citizen Mark Cristo to the MBTA, seeking trolley reclassification. This action sets a concerning precedent on many levels. Is the Board inviting submission of letters from all unelected, unaccountable citizens on its behalf? If so, I have a few I'd like to send your way. One consequence of this is the lack of expertise that is evident in this document, now serving as an official position of a town body. The letter's assertions run the gamut, from uninformed to factually inaccurate, to lacking context, to half-truths. I stated my concern about the assertions put forth by Mr. Cristo to the Select Board several months ago. I'm not going to do you the favor of calling them out, but I encourage you to save the town the embarrassment of presenting these inaccurate assertions to our state leaders and elected officials. I assume that this letter will only create confusion about what on earth is going on in Milton. It could be laughable if the stakes weren't so high. But the stakes are high. There's a much bigger issue at play here. Milton's current zoning laws have created an exclusive, economically segregated enclave, walled off from its neighbors by decades of socially regressive land use laws. This exclusivity and the segregation that accompanies it will only continue to grow as demand increases, and the town does nothing to change its land use policies in response. The state has passed a law asking the suburban communities to do just that, to pitch in and allow the expansion of multifamily zoning. And given Milton's proximity to Boston and access to transit, it is logical and correct to concentrate significant development here. The tactic to reduce Milton's zoning obligation by asking to downgrade its MBTA service classification has potential ramifications that will harm Milton and its neighbors, who also rely on the Matapan Line. It is a privileged position, perhaps not surprising, coming from an economically segregated wealthy enclave, to approach the issue of the Matapan Line by not advocating aggressively for its improvement, or rather to toss up our hands as a town, cynically act like there's nothing that can be done about it, and ask to be let off the hook for our obligations under state law due to its underperforming service. Private vehicle ownership doesn't work for everyone, and these people, whether it's age, physical limitations, or economics, have the potential to suffer the most from this bizarre, regressive advocacy. This feels especially sinister, given that the newest smoking gun that decided in the letter the Planning Board has adopted, the cancellation of plans for an extension of heavy rail service to Matapan in 1968 came as a result of a lawsuit filed by Milton. In 1968, the town took a step that in part created the conditions that you're complaining about today. We sought, we sought this outcome as a town, and now we're asking to be led off the hook because of its consequences. What on earth is going on in Milton? The MBTA Communities Act has also been criticized by its opponents because it isn't an affordable housing law. It relies on market forces to reduce the economic burden on Boston-area homeowners. But to those who make this criticism, why don't you lead an effort to make the law an affordable housing generator here in Milton? This is unquestionably an issue here, or I think it is. And I ask if you want Milton to be more affordable. So I encourage the Board to lead. Make the implementation of this law the first step toward greatly expanding the affordable housing offerings here in Milton. I see this law as an opportunity, you know this, I've said this before. I've seen this law as an opportunity for Milton to build on what makes it great. It's a beautiful, friendly community full of great people. I encourage the Planning Board to use their power to be proactive and solve the problems that they have with the MBTA Communities Law in a positive way. Is the MBTA flawed? Yes, I agree. Let's work to make it better. Can we rely on more than just market forces to make Milton more affordable? Yes, I agree. Let's expand Milton's affordable housing offerings. Is traffic annoying? Yes, I agree. Let's increase housing density and encourage commercial development to create walkable, transit-served neighborhoods that get people out of their cars. In closing, these are all issues that the Planning Board has the power to act on. Rather than throwing up your hands, I encourage you to use your imagination and lead. Thank you very much.
And I think we have time for, if there's one more, is there anyone else?
We have Tasia Wells in the Zoom.
Tasia? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This will be our last one, because we do have a public hearing to begin, so. Welcome, Tasia.
Okay. Hello, I think I'm unmuted. Thank you for all, Tasia Wells, 179 Highland Street. I just want to thank you all for your consideration and all the work that each of you do for the town. There's an endless amount of work to be done, and I commend all of you for your public service. I'll be very brief and just say, my family and I are still very much against the development of 111 Highland Street. Wetlands are vital, traffic concerns are alarming, and there is a lot of unanswered questions. I trust that the Planning Board will be doing a comprehensive review and make an informed decision, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Meredith, before we move on, I just wanted to say, before the meeting started, an older woman came in and dropped off a packet for each one of us. She's on Courtland Circle.
Okay.
She said she couldn't stay for Citizens Speak, but just wanted her packet to be entered into the official record.
Perfect, thank you, we can do that, and I'll--
Is this mine or yours?
Pass that on. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll get that, and appreciate that, her coming by. So at this time, that concludes Citizens Speak. We will now open the public hearing for 111 Highland Street Site Plan Approval, which was continued, actually, it says continued from 8:10.
Can't you do that, people know you're not doing public testimony?
Yes, and I will, yes, because I did speak to one neighbor. Welcome, Ned, please come and welcome your team. Tonight, we are not going to be able to do Citizens Comment this evening. This is simply just an introduction for the group to come back, and it's a reintroduction of the, of the project. And there will be ample time for public comment at our, when we continue to the next meeting, so. And I told the applicant, we only have about 45 minutes, if we can just move through, highlight what's happened since we last met, and your introductions for members of the Board who weren't here. But my apologies, because we just are under the gun with the--
And Meredith, can I, can I just say, so we've got 111 Highland Street, then the Bents Project--
Yes.
Then MBTA Communities. So, you know, there's no seating rules here, but if you want to get a little more comfortable, there's space in the kitchen across the hall, if you're here for one of the later agenda items, if you want a little more space to move around, not kicking anyone out of the room, just want to let folks know that if you're not here for this hearing, you can hang out in there if you want. Feel free.
We can make these chairs available.
And yeah, we can, we can bring some more chairs in there as well, so.
Yeah.
I think I dropped something.
Thank you, that's great.
Bring that up, sorry.
Okay.
Introduce yourself first.
Thank you. For the record, Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Northbridge Companies, which is the applicant for the, it's actually special permit and site plan approval for the development of the property at 107 and 111 Highland Street in Milton. This is a new application. If you recall, on April 8th, the Board consented to our motion to withdraw the prior application without prejudice to refile. We thought that, for a couple of reasons, that it would be appropriate to do that. One, is a new member of the Board, the town, this is a big project, the town deserves to have all five members participating and voting on that project. Jim was not part of the Board when we opened the initial hearing. And two, that given the volume of, given the number of changes that we're going through with plans, particularly as we're going through the Conservation Commission process, we thought appropriate to start over with a fresh set. And so that people have hands-on new and up-to-date materials without having to refer back and forth. And so we did file to reopen a new application, and we're on for tonight. I have a presentation, basically the plan tonight, and obviously subject to time, was to do an introduction again to the history of the zoning, a discussion about the demand for memory care and assisted living. We've got Deborah Felton, Molly Welch from Fuller Village, and Denise Quealy to speak briefly. Introduce Wendy Noah Kunske, who is the President of Northbridge, to talk about the AVITA program. And then get into Site Civil with Paul Avery, and at this time, Site Architecture with Rebecca Dillon. We anticipate coming back on the 28th with Landscape Architecture, Construction, Traffic, Construction Management, Tree Preservation, and any other things that we need to discuss.
Sorry, can you just repeat, Ned, so that what you're not going to discuss tonight will be, which topic?
We will not, well, we will discuss tonight, maybe only Site Civil.
Yeah, I don't think Architecture will have time.
We probably won't get into Architecture tonight. If we don't, we'll lead off with that on the 28th, with Landscape Architecture, and then potentially Traffic, Construction Management, Tree Preservation. Those could be topics for the following meeting, but that was the initial plan. And then obviously learned this evening that we have 45 minutes, so that will squeeze what's tonight.
Right, so all of that is still part of your presentation?
Absolutely.
So it's a long, multi-night presentation, so just to let the residents know during the presentation portion, there probably won't be an opportunity to speak, because we don't want it until the end of the presentation.
Right. And obviously, if we close out a section of something and the Board feels it's appropriate to open it up, and obviously--
Right. You're the Board, you're limited to an hour tonight?
Forty-five.
Forty-five minutes, so.
So, what I, you can move on to the fourth slide.
Josh actually has it, so.
Josh, fourth slide.
I'm sorry, introduce Josh.
So, what I thought it was important to do is to reset this development proposal in context. This is actually the product of planning that was undertaken by the Planning Board in the town in the last decade. The town planned for assisted living at this location. In 2011, 2012, I was representing another assisted living developer who had made an offer to purchase the property from the Milton Hospital, and I was actually sitting in this room, waiting for Milton Hospital to call me and say, go ahead with zoning, because I've worked a little bit with Alex Whiteside on the notion of putting zoning in place at this property. Ultimately, because the hospital's going through the throes of its merger with the BID, taking a system, they just didn't have the bandwidth to do that, and it didn't go forward. Three years later, in 2014, 2015, the Planning Board led the master plan process, it involved over 500 members of the community and others, and adopted a Planning Board, the master plan in 2015 with a core theme of taking care of seniors and supporting their healthy aging in place, and a specific call to action to encourage Milton Hospital to pursue past proposal to develop assisted living facility and hospital-owned property across the street from the medical institution and adjacent to senior housing. Senior housing obviously being Winter Valley. In response to that call to action, the hospital issued a request for proposals, and in 2020, '21, accepted a proposal from Northbridge Companies to pursue the AVITA of Milton Memory Care process. It was one of a number of proposals that they received. It was the one that they determined to be best value. Was it the highest value, but it was one that had, they deemed, lowest impact, met the, provided the greatest response to needs perceived in the town, and substantial value, obviously, to the hospital and to the, to the town. We then launched into an extensive process with Neighbors and this Board. We started meeting with Neighbors in the second quarter of 2021, and in July of '21, June or July of '21, we started into six months of negotiations, review with the Planning Board for the, to, so that the, the Planning Board could develop an article for submission to Town Meeting to, to provide framework for a memory care facility at this location. It's important to note that it was a Planning Board article. We obviously had a lot to do with drafting it, negotiating it, negotiated the site plan that was associated with it, and there was significant give and take with Neighborhood and the Planning Board with respect to the final form of that site plan and the final form of the bylaw itself. Town Meeting, Planning Board recommended approval, Warrant Committee recommended overwhelming approval, and Town Meeting voted three quarters, 73%, Town Meeting voted in favor of the article.
2021?
2022. 2022, March of 2022, 10 months after we started process with Neighbors, and eight months after we started process with Planning Board, Town Meeting adopted this zoning article. One of the things we heard as we were sort of closing out the last process was whether misrepresentations perhaps made to the Town Meeting to get Town Meeting to agree to vote in favor. We spent six months with the Planning Board, with drafts of site plans, with drafts of other materials that were reviewed by the Planning Board, that were discussed at length with the Planning Board, that were reviewed and discussed by the, by Town Meeting, by Neighbors and their representatives, at least one of the neighbors was represented by Council at the time, and he had significant input into the drafting of the, of the bylaw as it came through. There were no, what I can say is this, the memorandum that I wrote to the Warrant Committee, and the representations that I made on behalf of AVITA to the Warrant Committee, had one reference to traffic. Reference was that traffic impacts will be limited to shift changes, deliveries, and visitors. Residents don't drive. There were no numbers presented, there were no facts presented about traffic, there was no discussion about traffic and how traffic impacts would be mitigated. It was very simple presentation. My slide presentation to Town Meeting had one bullet that said the same thing. There were no discussions, no representations made by me or AVITA with respect to traffic and other impacts associated with the property. We know it's a tight site, we know there are significant wetlands on the site, at least two acres of the property are wet, there are two intermittent streams that, that come through the property, there are stream crossings that were required, but there were no misrepresentations made, and I'm the only person that was authorized to make any representations on behalf of Northbridge and its team. The only person that spoke to the Warrant-- The only person that spoke to the Warrant Committee, I'm the only person that spoke at town meeting. Town meeting ultimately approved zoning that was based on a site plan that we spent a great amount of time with negotiating with you. The current status is that, as you know, we withdrew and refiled an application for a special permit and site plan approval. This is the opening of that hearing. We're starting with a fresh new set of plans that incorporate changes that were driven by the Conservation Commission, fire chief, peer review, and questions and comments that we heard both at the earlier hearing here and through the Conservation Commission process. And we wanted to give the town the benefit, we thought it was appropriate to give the town the benefit of the participation of all five members of this board. It's significant to note, and I know we heard at Citizen Speak, suggestion about issue of wetlands. Conservation Commission voted on Tuesday night to approve the project and issued an order of conditions. They voted unanimously on Tuesday night. So with that, I'd like to hand it to ask Deborah Felton, Molly Welch, and Denise Quealy to come and speak, and then Wendy Noakunsky, and then I'll introduce Paul Avery.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We can, and there's a couple of extra microphones, so everybody can stay up here.
That'd be great.
If you would like, if there's room.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm Deborah Felton. I am a recently retired executive director at Fuller Village. Was associated with Fuller for over 20 years. I am a 37-year resident of Milton and a town meeting member from Precinct 2, and have been very involved in many different projects in the town, especially the master planning that was referred to. When this was first proposed in 2021, my board, the board of Fuller Village, wholeheartedly thought that this was an incredible idea. At Fuller, it's been our experience that, you know, we work with a lot of different families. There's a lot of memory care, a lot of dementia is here. And it's here in Milton, and it's going to grow even more. I was so impressed with the Northbridge communities. I went and visited their Needham site. If people haven't had an opportunity, you should really try to make time to go see that. It's beautifully positioned on the property, hidden back from the road in a, with trees, and you feel a sense of peace when you go in there. And then when you walk in the door, that's even more emphasized. I'm confident that Northbridge will bring a lot to our community where they have in every other town that they've developed. And that's the thing that I like about Northbridge is that they're not just a developer, but they are the operator too. There's lots of, I expect that they will bring support groups. They have kids from the high school in Needham working there. And they really embrace the communities that they're in. So I really look forward to having AVITA here and having them be part of the community. I just want to end with one thing. Mary Richardson, who people may know, was the co-host of Chronicle for many years. And in December 2021, December 30th, she died at the age of 76 of dementia. And in her obituary, this is public information, her family said they extended a very special gratitude to the extraordinary staff of AVITA of Needham. The love, kindness, and humor the AVITA staff displayed in Mary's care is a debt we can never fully repay. And I just think that that goes to the Northbridge community and their integrity. And I look forward to and urge the Planning Board to approve this project. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Molly Welch, who is the new executive director at Fuller Village.
Welcome.
Thank you. So thank you for allowing me to speak today. So yes, my name is Molly Welch. I'm the executive director at Fuller Village. As many know, Fuller Village is a standalone nonprofit senior living community located in Milton with approximately 400 residents. In my prior position, I've had over 20 years in an operations and management experience in the senior care industry in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, primarily skilled nursing facilities, but assisted independent living hospice agencies and home care. So I'm very well-versed in working with families and understand the challenges families face when trying to find quality, close-to-home memory care options for their loved ones. And family involvement in close-to-home are so important when finding a memory care option for their loved ones and for our loved ones. I'm entering my seventh month as executive director at Fuller, and it's truly a community that strives to have seniors enjoy life as independent as possible. And we work with our families and residents when we recognize that Fuller is no longer the right home for them. It's a very challenging situation when we have to do that. And it's even more challenging that these discussions are enabling us to make suggestions or guidance for closer-to-home options. So I've really seen firsthand that the families have limited or no options in the town of Milton in my seven months here for memory care services or residences. This unmet need, as Deborah stated, is only going to grow with the town's aging population. I'm witnessing their struggles to find local memory care options and resources, leaving them to travel further distances geographically or having to choose less appropriate options and risk the safety of their loved ones. I truly believe that the memory care option for Milton through Northbridge and seeing what Northbridge has demonstrated as a clear commitment to ensure the community they would build here and manage is going to be an asset to the Milton community. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of AVITA Milton.
Great, thank you so much. Nice meeting you.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Denise Quealy, and I live at 584 Randolph Avenue in Milton. And I'm here to provide a bit of community perspective and some firsthand perspective on caring for somebody with dementia. My mom had Lewy body dementia. And she, I grew up in Dorchester, but I'm a proud resident of Milton now. Raised my family here. There's, I think, 23 of us, Quealy's, you know, immediate family in Milton. I was the president of the MFE for many years, cutting MPTO, been involved in this community for a long time, and know many of you and love many of you for what you do. So thank you so much for being part of this community and being so active, especially for nonprofits and volunteering your time. I also have businesses in Milton. My husband owns Milton Plumbing. I own a woman-owned law firm here in Milton. We're vested in the community. My parents have also been vested in Milton from the get-go. Even though they grew up in Dorchester and lived in Dorchester, they moved here to Milton to Quessett Brook after my mom was having trouble going up and downstairs and getting in and out of the bathroom and so on and so forth. And my mom was very active in this community. She loved it. She was vibrant and a wonderful member of this community. When she was diagnosed with Lewy body dementia in December of 2019, it was devastating to us, you know? And, you know, Lewy body, for those of you who don't know, it's Parkinsonian features, loss of memory, hallucinations, which were at times very terrible and very hard to deal with. But she also had very nice hallucinations as well, and incontinence. So we decided, my mom was one that did not like hospitals, did not like, not that she didn't trust them, but she just wanted to be home. So we did what we could to keep her at home. And my father, as an electrician, was local 103 for many years, saved money. And we were able to care for her in the comfort of her own home until her death. And, you know, just from a family's perspective, how tough that was to do, right? To be able to toilet your mom and wash her and pivot her in and out of a chair. And I got injured, my dad lost a lot of weight. You know, we hired people to help. And if I had to do it all again, all over again, I absolutely would, a thousand times. But, you know, we sought services, support services. How do we find out about Lewy body? How do we deal with somebody like this? And it was very hard to do. We had to go, you know, deep into Boston, into a community we didn't know. We had no services around here that we could find. And I think this facility is going to be something that our seniors deserve. I'm of the age now, and a lot of people in the community are, where we're taking care of our parents. We want to keep them close to us. We want to make sure they're well-cared for. So the other thing is my, we used a lot of services in Milton. I called Milton Police and Fire so many times, and they were wonderful, you know, to help out at home. 911 walked me through CPR for my mom, you know, which I'd never thought, never thought I'd had to do. But if I had a facility, you know, in the area, would I, would we have considered as a family to put her in a facility? Absolutely. And I think it would have helped a lot with my, with my dad, who's doing well now. But, you know, it was a very tough road to go through. So I just, I think it's very important for us to plan well for our elders. I think it's a very smart thing to do as a community. We have such wonderful resources here for, you know, council and ages, Fuller Village. But this is the next step. And it's something that is affecting not only elderly, but young people as well, unfortunately. So it's something that we do need to address as a community. And from what I could tell from Northbridge, the first time I spoke, it was a few weeks after my mom passed away. I was asked to speak, and I jumped right on it. And I feel just as strongly, if not more strongly, about this now that it's needed in our community. I see it, you know, affecting friends and family members. So I want to thank you for your time. And thank you for all you do. And I know that you're looking at many more issues than community need, but community need is a big one. So I just want you to be able to represent that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Wendy.
Thank you. It's good to see you all again, and thank you for your time. My name is, for the record, Wendy Noakunsky. I'm the co-founder and president of the Northbridge Companies. Just to give a little background for those who may not have been here the first time, Northbridge actually has been serving seniors and their families for 20 years. I myself have been working in the New England marketplace for over 30 years in senior living. We focus on, and we are developer-owner-operators. So the key there is that we're not, we're going to be a neighbor. We're not just coming and developing something. We will be here, just as we do with all of our communities. We have 19 communities throughout New England. The majority of them are in Massachusetts. We have quite a few in Maine, New Hampshire, and Connecticut as well. The demand for AVITA memory care is so great. We now have five standalone memory care communities within our company. And I have to tell you that it evolved originally because my father-in-law was very young when he was diagnosed. And back then, he was 68 years old. And back then, there were no options for assisted living memory care. Most people who have memory care issues don't need skilled nursing care. And that type of environment is not the right place for them. A lot of what they need is safety, security, queuing, engagement, and the right design to allow them to live their best life. And they do. And as Deb said, I encourage anyone here to come and visit AVITA of Needham. We have one in Newburyport. We have quite a few in Maine. One of the things that we focus on is the neighborhood, the neighbors, the communities in which we serve. We're very active and involved, as Deb had said. We're involved with the high schools. We're involved with the garden clubs, you name it, men's, women's clubs, because we want to be part of the community, and we are. And you can see that in all of the communities you come to visit, hopefully. And the demand for, in Milton in particular, you know, we always do a market, you know, study and get those numbers. And it says, wow, there's a big demand. But one of the biggest things that we do is that we talk to people in the town, like Deborah, and like Molly, and like family members that are here tonight of people who really need this type of service and really want it. And that is what drives us to do what we do. So I am very excited about the opportunity to bring AVITA to Milton. We are good neighbors. You can talk to any of the towns that we've, we've developed in and operate in, as well as the neighbors too, and our residents and families. So thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. I know it's tight, and I know we're going to have more opportunity to present the project over the next couple of weeks and months. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it now to Paul Avery and launch into the presentation of the site plans that's been redeveloped.
Great.
Is this my board chair? Can I talk to the screen?
I think so. Want to hold it? And it should be on. Or if you'd like to hold one of the microphones, maybe that would, to get started while he's...
No, that's fine. This works fine.
Great.
If I can get the next slide. So I just walk through the civil site plans. A lot of this is very similar to the prior application. And, and just go through it and go from there. So anyway, starting off, this is what is just an existing conditions. This one has been marked up because it serves not just the existing conditions, but it's also demolition plan. So we're calling for removing the existing driveway to 107 Highland. The house gets removed, the barn gets removed. Again, for orientation, we've got Highland Street here, page rights. Baffert is down here. North is generally up the page. Milton Hospital's over here. We're also going to be removing the barn. There was a house on the front of the site here, that's not there anymore. And the carriage shed. And then this generally is an approximate depiction of the... Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Ned did. Okay, I'm Paul Avery, Oak Consulting Group. So, yeah. I'm the civil engineer for the project. Okay. I'm sorry. I would normally do that. I thought Ned did it, so, sorry. Okay. Can I have the next slide? This is a, we're going to go, all the rest of the drawings are in closer than this. But this is just the existing condition that shows the entire site, including the panhandle that comes off the south end of it. This here is just to generally kind of show in a larger view where the project sits in the context of the overall site, some of the existing structures in the neighborhood. The existing driveway, it's a little tough to see, but it's a great outline that runs right through here. So this proposed entrance to the site is generally in the same location as the existing driveway to the site. The earth is, there's the barn and the shed I was talking about a moment ago. You can just barely make out the house that's on the 111. Property is right about in here, and the garage is in there, and then it moves south from there. Next slide, we'll get into some of the specifics. So here's a zoomed-in view. Again, the driveway is about the same location as the existing driveway. We have it wide enough here for two-way traffic coming and going. We have a stop bar for exiting. The way this facility lays out with each of the neighborhoods within the AVITA facility has to have exterior courtyards. So that we need the bottom floor to be at ground level, which drives the rest of this upper level. So as a result, the driveway will come up from Highland Street. So we have retaining walls on either side of the wall here to enable that to happen, minimizing the impacts in the wetlands in doing so. Traffic comes in. There's a drop-off circle here that I'll get to a little bit more detail that was configured for emergency vehicles. We have some immediate accessible parking in front of the building, some other visitor parking closer to the building, and then additional parking at the rear of the site. All of this is two-way traffic. This driveway down here is to a service area. And this, in review with the fire department, has been widened. That's 24 feet to make sure that there's sufficient room for fire trucks to stage down there in the event of emergency. There are three courtyards I talked about that correspond with the two, three communities within the building itself. This plan differs a little bit as we work through the public safety issues from the prior one, that we have a connecting walkway now, which has been added, which enables easier access to the middle one. What we had previously before, if there was, if the fire department needed to get back in there or something like that, the fire truck would need to come down the service area, and then they'd have to drag the hoses all the way up and around. Now, we can park a fire truck if necessary here. Now, we can park a fire truck if necessary here, and then they can just come across the other courtyard. So that was requested by the fire department, and we were able to accommodate that. We've identified some, uh, snow storage areas at various places on the site. And we have the transformer, generator, dumpsters, and things like that in the bottom here. Can I have the next slide? These are the swept path analyses that we worked out, uh, with the fire chief to show how fire trucks on this particular slide will get in and out of the site. Fire truck comes in. The, uh, traffic circle here, this is enlarged from what we had before. It's been expanded to allow a fire truck to make a complete turnaround there in a single movement without any conflict with bumper overhang on parked cars or bollards or anything like that. Fire truck can continue to the rear of the site if there's a need to do so. And the fire truck can also, uh, go down into, um, the service area. Leaving is more or less the same thing. There is not room for a vehicle like that to turn around down here. So they would have a choice of either backing down and driving out, or driving down and backing back up again. And the movements are pretty clear here on Highland Street that, uh, can make the turn in and out without crossing across, uh, opposing traffic. Next slide. Similar diagram. This is for delivery vehicles. We ended up doing this with what's called a WB40, which is a 40-foot wheel-based vehicle. That is bigger than the actual vehicle that will be used. Uh, we previously presented, there's a, the, the, there's a contract with the food service company. They have, the Gordons has a specific truck, uh, that's been used. Um, this is bigger than that, so this is, um, a conservative representation. The, uh, delivery trucks will come in. They will need to go around the traffic circle regardless of whether they want to or not, because they have to check in at the front desk. So they'll come in, they'll come around the little traffic circle, check in at the front desk, then pull forward and be able to back down to the service area. And then when they leave, they just drive out. So that's how that dynamic works. Can I have the next slide? Okay, this is the grading and drainage plan. There's a lot of technical stuff on this. This has all been reviewed extensively through the permitting we did with the Conservation Commission for stormwater. But generally speaking, um, water moves across the site from south to north. There are two intermittent streams. There's the intermittent stream on the east side that runs right through here. And there's the intermittent stream on the west side that runs through here. Both of them converge in a large wetland area. At the north is a site that has a vernal pool within it. From here, the water goes over, uh, a, a stone weir built into the wall as a part of the landscaping and continues, uh, off-site to the north. Those patterns are replicated here under the proposed condition. We have, uh, the, the main part of, of the building in this area, as well as the service area, will drain and come into the east intermittent stream. There was, there's an existing 24-inch culvert under the driveway that serves as a bit of a bottleneck. Um, the Conservation Commission requested that we, uh, upgrade that in accordance with the stream crossing standards to enable wildlife to move through this area, so that's what we did. Removing the bottleneck here sort of took away some of the flood storage that's happened in this wetland area here. And we're mitigating that by creating flood storage, uh, in the area where the, the barn and the carriage shed currently sit. So that water that comes through here is, is mostly just coming off the roof, and, and a lot of it is what comes in from off-site. Drainage coming down the driveway is collected by catch basins at the bottom, and it works its way directly. Can you go back a slide again, please? Okay, thank you. Into, and goes into the wetland area. Uh, portions of the western part of the building go directly into the western stream. And then, um, on the west side of the site, we've got the rear parking lot. Uh, we've got some drainage structures here collecting runoff. And then all of this goes into an infiltration basin that, uh, detains the runoff and also recharges groundwater. Okay? And again, this has been reviewed extensively, uh, by the Conservation Commission, uh, who's recently issued an order of conditions. This is the site utilities plan. The utilities, uh, will all come off of Highland Street. Water service comes off of Highland, as does gas, electric, and data. They come off, off the street, up the driveway, and down into the service area. The only utility here that's different from that is the sewer. There is no sewer in Highland Street. So what we have to do is the nearest connection point is, uh, the terminal manhole on Spafford, and which then goes east down towards Reedstale. So to get from here to there, we are proposing a pump station and then putting a, uh, two-inch force main underneath Highland Street. And then there's a final, uh, gravity brake manhole before we connect to the sewer. These plans have been submitted to the engineering department, and they have made comments on the gravity brake manhole and things like that. So are aware of the plan and have provided input on it.
You know what? I think this might be just a good, because I really want to save time for the architecture, but that was very, very helpful. You know, if we want, maybe five minutes for just quick questions for the...
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Did the, um, Conservation Commission have a peer review performed of the stormwater design?
They relied on the peer review of the stormwater design that was done by Tetra Tech for you. There was additional, uh, work that they, questions that they asked of Tetra Tech specifically, specifically with respect to potential impacts of groundwater, um, maybe moving off-site, and issues with respect to, um, potential impact of vernal pool, given the change in the hydraulics. And, um, that, those responses came back favorably, uh, for the project. They were reviewed Tuesday evening by the Conservation Commission. And Tuesday evening, the commission voted to close the hearing, approve the project as, as currently designed, and issue an order of conditions.
So will Tetra, will we be provided with, uh, an updated, uh, report from Tetra Tech?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, um, Sean Reardon is working on an updated report that sort of incorporates his prior reviews and updates, um, relative to the final, the final outcomes. A significant number of the modifications that were made to the plan were driven by Sean's comments.
Okay. And then maybe we can have Sean come to one of the...
That's what I had already asked him. Yeah, so we'll invite him maybe to come to our next...
He indicated earlier that he wasn't going to be able to make it in person tonight. He is available, I think, on Zoom.
He's here, but if we want to kind of wrap up the hearing, I don't know if you want to bring him in or...
Okay, maybe we'll have him at the next, our next...
I do, I do understand that he is, um, has a new deliverable, which is updated review of the current plans, relative to prior comments and so...
Yeah, I guess I'd like to have a chance to review that prior to him.
Yeah.
Because that way we can ask questions about what we've read in the report.
Exactly, that's what I was, so if we could get a copy of that, that would be great.
I have a question too. Is it normal practice that the Conservation Commission doesn't have their own, uh, peer review? I would think that the Conservation Commission would have their own, and then we would have our own.
It's, it's less, it is less, um, usual for the Conservation Commission to have peer review.
They don't normally have peer...
They don't normally have peer review. They have pretty good subject matter expertise on the commission. And with respect to their, um, standing consultant, Steve Ivers is, um, is their, uh, is their consultant. And he's 50 years' experience in the wetland arena. And they rely on him significantly. I think the chair is pretty well versed, and there are other members of the commission as well, Tom Palmer, um, for example. But they did ask, um, there were some questions that were asked...
Did you do a hydrologist study?
They asked, they asked, they were, they were asked to review a question of, of potential hydrology. And I think the question, as I understand, the chair to understand it, was what would happen to groundwater with a new building? Would, would groundwater shift to the right, go under Highland Street, potentially down Spafford Road? And the conclusion that was drawn was that, no, it would continue to follow the path of water, which is downhill, and follow down to the north, to, to, to the vernal pool and out as it currently goes. That was...
That was stormwater, that wasn't...
No, that was groundwater.
That was groundwater, okay.
It was groundwater. It was, it was groundwater.
So we had requested, uh, in between, you know, of Tim, that we hire a hydrologist for a peer review? And we were told that there would be a hydrologist, a peer review done, that the Conservation Commission was going to have Tetra... And they, and I think Steve Ivers had known somebody who was with Tetra Tech, who was a hydrologist, who was going to do a peer review and be able to provide a report.
They provided, they provided a report that was responsive to the questions that were asked, uh, by, by the commission, and that also evaluated, uh, materials provided by, um, hydrologists for some of the neighbors. And based on that material, Conservation was, Commission was satisfied that the hydrology issues were adequately answered, and they issued, they issued, uh, they voted to approve the project and issue an order of conditions.
So I guess the question is, will, will we be provided with this, all the information that CONCOM was?
Sure.
And their order of conditions, does that include a report? No.
No, it's, it's, it is approval. They have a standard set of boilerplates and then conditions, and then they have some additional conditions that are specific to this project. Um, those will be finalized. The, the order itself, uh, needs to be, uh, drafted, um, and then signed. And I think the drafting was, they talked about potentially having it by the end of this week, the first of next week, and then they would issue it.
Oh, Renath, I wonder whether we can request, um, Steve Ivers' attendance meeting, just to take questions from us?
Yeah, that would be...
Mr. Ivers, well, you, you, if you can do it, you get him on the 28th, because he's going off on a...
Yeah.
Significant cruise, um, in early October.
So let's put him on, yeah, let's invite him to, on the 28th, Tim.
Let's have both Sean Reardon and...
Yep. Steve Ivers, absolutely.
Yeah, my only question about having the peer review is I feel like the Conservation Commission has their own charge, and we have our own charge. So I'm just surprised that they don't have their own peer review to review their charge.
It seems to me we can, we can learn what they've done, what they've had analyzed, and we can decide whether we think any additional, um, analysis is warranted. But it's hard to know now without...
Yeah, because I think Sean was doing a great job with, with, really on top of the engineering side of things, but, but just...
He did all of the peer review for the 40B, um, applications, which had some...
Familiar with the water on the site, that's...
The only thing I would, the only thing I would suggest is that the Conservation Commission is the commission that's charged specifically with addressing wetland protection issues.
Yeah.
The issues raised with respect to groundwater and otherwise were directly at the issue of wetland protection.
Yeah, so it's wetland protection is their charge, yes. But we have to also consider beyond the wetlands, right? So, I mean, we had resident neighbors express concern about, and you, you mentioned it, whether there would be anything off-site, right? And so we, we just need to, you know, where they may not have been focused on that, we just want to make sure that...
They were very focused on that. That was the focus of a whole lot of discussion in the last two hearings.
So they only had two hearings on this?
No, they started in March.
On the new, but this was a new application?
No, no. We didn't, we did not withdraw that application. We kept going on the, on the Conservation Commission, and we closed the hearing this past Tuesday. We started in March. We had seven nights of hearing over seven months with the Conservation Commission. We withdrew with the planning board and refiled. But we did not close with the, we had parallel hearings going with both boards for a period of seven months. We closed the hearing with the planning board in, on August 8th, August 10th. The August 8, August 8 hearing of the Conservation Commission was continued to the 10th, two nights ago. They voted to close the hearing, determined they did not need additional information, and they closed the hearing.
Okay, so I was just under the impression this is a new application.
This is a new application for the special permit.
For this, yeah.
But it's the same, all the same information. It's not new information.
Correct.
Like, nothing was changed.
The, the site plans were changed from what was originally filed in sort of substantially minor ways, not insubstantial, however. You know, we, to address the, in particular, the issues raised by the fire chief in, in context with Sean's, Reardon's, uh, peer review. They asked for expanded turnaround for the fire, so there would be no need to back. They asked for a wider driveway down to the loading dock. They asked for direct access around the, the building to run a hose from one area to the next. That pushed us into the 25-foot no disturb, no disturb zone, uh, on each side. The Conservation Commission had to vote separately from the issuance of an order of conditions to approve those impacts to the non-disturbed zone. We demonstrated that there was about 900 square feet of disturbance of that non-disturbed area, but that we were replicating or mitigating with approximately 4,000 square feet of other area that was appropriate. They accepted that as a, as a ratio. There were some minor additional impacts to the wetlands themselves associated with the crossing. I think 60, 60 additional square feet or something like that.
It was still well within the normal threshold for replication ratios.
The total replication is at a, is at a ratio of almost two and a half to one. So the va, the number of square feet of wetlands that were being impacted by the crossings was being mitigated on a two and a half to one basis, which they also accepted. They accepted the, the overall plan, and, um, as I said, voted to approve the project and issue an order of conditions.
So just to be clear about what changed, like, the, the site planning itself, position of the building's the same?
Yes.
So you, you've mentioned some walkways, some changes to roadway widths, et cetera. So it's really more the roadway and wetlands considerations for stormwater design, not the other civil engineering aspects?
That's absolutely right. So our approach in designing all of this was really minimize, avoid wetlands impact to the greatest extent possible. And initially, the project didn't go into the wetlands or the non-disturbed zone any more than it had to for what's referred to as a limited project where you have to cross to get from one side to the other. And, um, so as a result of making the revisions that were requested by Tetra Tech and the fire chief, the expanding of the, if you compare the two, you'd see that it's much larger. Fire truck would have had to do a backup maneuver before. We had to push a little bit. We sacrificed a couple of parking spaces to make that happen. And it was, yeah, like 900 square feet. I mean, just small amounts in a few little places where this, uh, expanded the scope into the non-deserved, non-disturbed zone, um, more than just being to get in and out of the site.
So there was, so on this site, it's, it's faint, but there was, this red line is the, is the 25-foot. Is that the 25-foot?
Yeah, well, 25-foot is the, um, hold on.
It's this.
No, uh, you know, the red lines are the 25-foot non-disturbed zones.
So there are a couple of points, because of the widening of the, of the driveway down, the widening of the circle, there are a couple of points where we pushed into the 25-foot no disturb. And there's a little, a couple of points where we pushed in along here, where we brought that walkway in and around from this, uh, neighborhood, this outdoor area to this outdoor area. Because it were public safety related, the commission felt that those were acceptable.
So, uh, the amount of impervious area increased a little bit, then?
It probably did a little bit. We ran all the stormwater numbers and we updated the model and, you know...
So the building footprint's the same as it was before?
Yes, it was. So the building didn't change, the location...
And, and the building's relationship to the site vertically hasn't changed as well?
Hasn't changed. That's right.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I guess one other thing, Renath, if I may. You know, we talked about the, uh, I think extensively before, the fire trucks and the delivery trucks. So I guess, um, and you said those were recent changes. Do we have in the packet, sorry, I don't recall, um, the, anything in writing from the, the fire chief?
That's what I was going to ask.
We don't.
We can, we can get that.
We can get that. And the engineer will, the town engineer will do that too.
Signing off on, my understanding is that Tetra Tech has to complete its re-review. And then, my understanding is that they would be asked to review the review and sign off on what's been done.
And also then on the, um, on the analysis for the, for the delivery, that will get some, either Tetra Tech or GPW?
Well, Tetra Tech drove it, but they, so they commented on it. So that was, um, really, we ended up with this in coordination that all of us, the Tetra Tech, fire chief, we all sat down and decided that this is what we're going to do, so...
Okay, so just having some, um, back, backup to what you've said... Okay, so just having some back backup to what you've said, you know, in writing in the in the record, I think, would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. I was gonna say the same. And the entry, the driveway coming in, did that widen at all? Because I know that that there was a concern of if there was a fire and there's vehicles, you know, coming in and leaving at the same time.
It did not. So we're 22 feet. Yeah, where I think we're 22 feet, it did not widen.
And Tetra Tech was comfortable with that as far as?
Yes.
And the fire chief was comfortable with that.
Yep, and the fire chief.
The only place they asked for the widening was going down the service drive. Because and that was just that we have, if there's an emergency and we have vehicles staged down there and somebody has to come and somebody has to go, that type of thing, so.
That's helpful. Well, I think that's, if we can review that information, that's a good place for us to pause and to continue our hearing. We'll be able to review those and would welcome Sean on Zoom or however, whatever's easiest. And then also Steve Ivers, if he can join us to give us sort of an explanation on their questions they proposed.
Would like a motion to continue?
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion to continue the site plan approval and special permit application for 111 Highland Street to our September 28th meeting at 7:05.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, thank you. And also from the public, since we're not doing public comment tonight, if you want to email us anything, if you have anything prepared that you were gonna say, please send it to Tim if you can, to his office, and he can give it to us to review for our next meeting as well.
Can I just hand you the package?
Yeah, that's great, perfect. And we will review those. We.
This is just what we initially filed with Conservation Commission?
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's great, and we'll have those to review, perfect. And we'll upload this for the public record as well.
Thank you very much.
So we can, thank you. We can now begin our site plan approval for 79 Pleasant Street, Bents Cookie Factory.
Do we have one more?
Here.
Thank you. Do you need it?
I do.
Yeah.
You wanna do that? Oh, Tim is gonna run up and scan it, or do you wanna do it?
And I do some stacks earlier.
That's great. Okay, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Welcome. Just gotta queue things out here. There may be somebody named Greg Morse who's on Zoom. He's the engineer. He should be, if possible.
Available.
Whatever you do so that he might be able to.
You wanna do it?
Share screens. I'm not sure whether, can you share screen for the?
We can enable him to be able to share screen.
And invite him as a participant?
Sure, he's here, first of all, I'm sorry.
And we can invite him to be a participant in this.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Yes, this is Greg Morse, I'm in attendance.
So before I start, I need copies of the plan. I know you look at it on the screen. I have to look at it. I can't, I need two sets of glasses to look at something at a distance. So maybe this is also true for you, I don't know, but you could pass these out. The six-page plan. I just thought you might want to look at it in front of you.
Great, thank you, Marion.
Did you find anybody see that Greg Morse was actually?
He's a, oh, you can't see it, but.
No, I understand, great, wonderful. Okay, so I'm Marion McCadrick. I represent the applicant for this application, Falcone Properties. And also here tonight is Bob Falcone, he's in the audience, but he can also come up if you want to ask him questions. So this is partially a modification request for a site plan that was approved by the planning board. I believe it was in 2019. However, many of you were not on the planning board at that time. So I'm just going to give you just a very quick overview of what the Bents project was all about. I won't take much time, and then I'll just explain what this application is for. I did file two applications. One is for modification and one is for site plan approval because I wasn't sure whether the a parking lot requires separately requires site plan approval. So just in excess of caution, I filed both applications. So what happened with Bents was Bents is an historic building, you're all familiar with it. The cookie factory, the place where we bought broken cookies for our kids years ago. And many years ago, it was a place where water crackers that were used even as early as the Civil War, but later on, when they were manufactured at Bents.
Excuse me, is there something that can make the volume louder?
I have to speak up because this only goes into the, so I will speak up. And and it's hard because I'm turned away from you, so maybe just turn a little bit sideways, too. So earlier, in the couple of years preceding 2019, I was contacted by Falcone Properties, by Bob Falcone, and to do some research on the property and to talk about what possible redevelopment options might make sense for this. And a primary interest of the Falcones was the historic building. So they wanted to see the historic building maintained, but they also realized that it was in a kind of condition internally that would require really complete, completely taken apart and rebuilt for many, many reasons. And then I think that turned out to be even more true once they started the construction. So the plan they developed was to keep the facade, keep the exterior, take off a back wing, which was an apartment, and to create a mixed use for the building. So this had been since 1900. It had been a pre-existing, non-conforming business use. And it was basically a bakery, a sort of a combination bakery and other types of goods facility. Different things were manufactured at different times. Probably about 20 years ago, a cafe was introduced on the on the first floor. It was a very popular cafe. And and subsequent owners also continued the cafe. The only problem was that the cafe really couldn't make enough money to sustain itself. So we'd get new, the new owners would enter the picture periodically. There is still a cafe, that's part of the the current operation. A catering business has been added, and that's now on the first floor. There are five small apartments, and the 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 building's on a hill. So the first floor becomes, the ground floor becomes the first floor. So the apartments sort of span that that grade. And then on the third floor or the second floor, depending on how you think about it, there's office space. And it's all been very nicely renovated, especially the office space inside because there are still exposed brick walls. You still see some of the original ceiling features. The building is modern and comfortable, but it has, it still has the feel of the old facility. And certainly, the outside of the building in the front still looks the same. So that was the intent. It took quite a long process of convincing, particularly for the Board of Appeals, because we needed a number of variances in order to do this. And we also, of course, had to have site plan approval from the planning board. And probably, there were many sticking points, many difficult issues that had to be worked out. But parking was probably the most difficult because this, the original site, the Bents site by itself, which was what Falcone Properties owned at the time we applied, it only had a limited space for parking. And the only reason it had some additional space is because the Falcones went to Land Court to make sure that they had the right to use an easement that was on one side of the property. And they were successful in that effort. So there was enough area in the back to create some parking spaces and a passageway. But it was minimum. It was the minimum amount of parking for this mixed use. And so subsequent to those applications, the Falcones were able to purchase the adjacent property to the right. That's 672 Randolph Ave. That's a residential property with also another antique residential home, very, very attractive. I call it Victorian cottage, but it has some nice features that have been maintained. It's in good condition. And so they now own both properties. And it happens that, because I did a long title search for this property when I first began working on it, both properties were owned together almost until maybe 20, 30 years ago. And they were gradually subdivided in order, basically, I think, to make money for some of the previous owners. But now they're back together again. Not the whole area, but a good portion because this portion, 672, was part of it. And that's probably one reason the Bents building is practically touching this house is one of the awkward features of having to do the redevelopment. So what the Falcones would like to do is to continue the residential use of the house, keep it in its current, exactly the same, basically. Keep it with its own private driveway on the right, not subdivide the property, although it's it's a 20,000-square-foot-plus, much more than is required for the C District. They don't want to subdivide the lot, although we looked at that as an option. They want to maintain control over all of the property. But they do really need additional parking area for the uses that are in existence at Bents. So this application is not to change any of the uses. This is an application to add parking. But the parking area that would be created is on a residential lot, so they have to get a use variance from the Board of Appeals. I've filed the application. The hearing probably will not be scheduled until mid-October to late October. So just so you know, as you receive information from me and we have our discussion, this will have to be continued because this is another one of those situations where site plan approval is contingent on the zoning relief being granted and the zoning relief is contingent on site plan approval, at least the modification of the original site plan approval being granted. So that's just sort of a an introduction to what we're trying to do here. We had, let's see. So the first step was to have Morse Engineering, that's the engineering company, working for the Falcones on this. And also, it's the same company that worked on the original site plan. Morse Engineering has done work on the site, gone out to the site, has done test borings all over the site and has created subcatchment areas that describe the ways that stormwater is absorbed on the site now and will be in the future. And they've had to design different types of stormwater structures, I guess you'd call them, in each one of these areas because they're different. Some of them are sandy, some are rocky. It's not the sort of thing I can get into a lot of detail about. But if you look in on the, I think it's the last page of this plan, and and I'll go back to the rest of the pages in a second, but, because you were just talking about stormwater, so I thought I'd point this out, I thought it was kind of interesting. There are a lot of areas on the last bridge here. Bents site and then also on this second lot where the house is and then the area where the parking lot is. The reason those subareas were created was to do varying designs for stormwater control. So it is expected that if this parking lot is allowed and is constructed, there will be much less stormwater running downhill off the site. Right now, it's a very hill, it's a rather steep hill, and water just runs down from the hill and back and down into the street. If you, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look, you're probably pretty familiar with Bents and you do probably remember the house that's next door. The distinctive feature of that house is the house is perched up above the street. So there's a steep grade in front of the house and the driveway has to go up that grade. Then the house is on a sort of level, a little bit of a level site, and there is a level area in the back, generally level, that's the yard. I'm very familiar with that because when the Bents project was being built, there were things that we had to work out in terms of what the fence was like and whether there was proper footings under the fence and, you know, to make sure there wasn't anything draining into the neighbor's yard. Then the yard sort of gradually, you can look at the topography lines on the pages in this map, in this drawing, and you'll see that it gradually rises in the back, so it's not flat. So stormwater control is an issue, no matter what you're doing, even if you're not building a lot. And this is gonna, a building, this is gonna be a paved lot, so it is going to be important. Okay, so what you have here for a site plan, I'm just quickly going to describe, you know, the different pages in the site plan. And then I thought that maybe Greg Morse might want to add more detail or maybe you would have questions and he would want to answer the questions. So we have six pages, the plan. The first page is the location. It just shows you generally where this is located, as it is in, you know, in all of these site plans. Page two shows existing conditions, and this shows the existing permitted parking lot at Bents with all of the parking spaces that are currently designed.
Mary, could we ask Greg to pull this up while you're walking through it?
Yeah, that would be great.
Greg, can you pull up the plan?
Unfortunately, I cannot have the ability to screen share that plan. I understood that was submitted digitally.
Yeah, you can.
And the board had a paper copy in front of them.
It says that you should be able to, but I'll figure it out.
Okay, we're gonna try to do it.
Great, thank you.
Great. Any comments, Greg, that you would like to make while we're pulling that up?
Sure, for the record, Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering. No, I think Marion's plan here, intent is to go through each of the sheets that was submitted. You know, sheet one is obviously our cover page. Sheet two is the topography and the property lines of the property. The property that's being added, the 672 Randolph Ave, it's a little under half an acre in size. It's about 23,000 square feet. And as Marion said, the plan shows the topography down along Randolph Ave at about elevation 100 and the topography rising at the back of the property to elevation 118. So there is about 18 feet of grade difference from the back to the front. As part of our existing conditions, we did soil borings and test pits out there. Those locations are marked on the plant. We generally had loamy, sandy soil relatively deep to groundwater in the locations that were proposing for the parking lot. I'm gonna turn it back over to Marion. I can get into the specifics, but I'm gonna let her continue on.
Great, we've got it, that's great, it's up on the screen.
Okay, we'll just go back and forth on page. So this is the existing conditions page that I was referring to. The next page just shows construction details for the moment. We won't dwell on that, but we can come back to it. The page you're probably most interested in in terms of design is the actual parking lot design, which is, I think, page four. And this also shows the landscaping. What we did here was to give the engineer the task of designing to Section 7 of the zoning bylaws. So if you're going to create a parking area of more than a certain number of spaces in a residential area, you have to meet all the design conditions in Section 7. And so we believe that we have done that here. We do, I normally have a more detailed review by the building commissioner, but you know, we have a new building commissioner, he's been very helpful, and he's wanted to move this along and get it to the Board of Appeals. But, you know, it's certainly worthwhile to spend some time as a planning board looking at that design and comparing it to the requirements of Section 7, just in case. I've tried to do that myself. But what you will note in this plan is, I do know that the parking spaces are designed to be the space size that they're supposed to be. You'll see on the left side that there's an area of lawn because you're required to have a break in a parking area and have landscaping or lawn. It's also a good place to put snow for snow storage in the winter. And I do expect we will eventually get snow one of these winters, maybe this winter. But anyway, that's that's why that's there. You'll see the landscaping on the lower edge of the parking lot and the rear because those are the areas that need to be completely screened from view if you want to sort of pretend the parking lot isn't there for better way of describing it. We have a residential home in the front. It's it's being rented now and will continue to be rented by the Falcones. We don't want that view from there to be a saw, you know, a view into the parking lot. And we also don't want the view from the street to show the parking lot. If you stand in the street in front of 672, you really can't see behind. But there is, you know, the driveway goes up on one side, so there's a bit of a view, and neighbors on that side could have some of the view. So it is certainly important to have the screening, but it's required by the zoning bylaw language, anyway. The the change to the existing parking lot is the reduction in in parking spaces. And I'm not sure how clearly you can see it here, but I believe it's it's three, it may be four. What I can tell you is that the net gain is 15 spaces. So there were more than 15 spaces in the parking area, but we lose parking spaces in order to create the entrance in the existing vents. So I don't actually have in front of me a total of all of the parking spaces that will remain. remain and the new spaces. I know it's a net increase of 15. I will give that to you. I need to go back and be careful and do that calculation, talking to the engineer. So, because the main purpose of this parking lot is to increase parking. It's because this building is very successful, the businesses, there's, you know, the developer's office, there's a design office upstairs. They really like the building, but they are complaining, you know, that their, everybody, their customers have to park in the street. They don't have a lot of people going in and out, but it would be much better for everybody if people could come in and just park and stay there. And when you do go in back to look for a space, oftentimes you come up, you look, you do a, you have to turn around and you don't get a space, and then you come down and you have to look for one in the street. So our feeling is that there will be a benefit to providing more parking because there should be less parking on the street, that there is no change to the business use, no change to the cafe use, no change to the catering use. So this isn't an increase in traffic that we're asking for permission for, but it is a better layout for parking. And it's, these are both residential lots, so we needed variances to do any of this on the original lot, we need a variance to do this on the adjacent lot, and we'll have to see how the Board of Appeals deals with that and, you know, what kinds of opinion and comments they have. It's not an easy thing to get a variance. The standard, you know, argument for the standard here would be basically that it's a very unusual situation from a historical standpoint. It's also a very unusual topography both, for both of these lots, not easy to create any kind of parking, and we want to keep the historic structures because this corner is one of those corners in Milton that's identified with the town, and I think people do care about how it looks. Finally, both sites face Randolph Ave. We all know there's a lot of traffic veering off Randolph onto Pleasant. Unfortunately, that's a tough thing for everybody, and it's a dangerous thing for everybody who has to park in the street, but the Randolph Ave traffic is intense, and that affects the viability of residential properties along this site. So you're going to, you know, you, we could have taken approach and said, this should be rezoned, this should be a business, you know, this should be a business district. That would be the most extreme, saying it's not suitable for residential anymore because there's too much traffic and there's commercial next door. That isn't at all the approach the Falcones want to use because they want to preserve the building. So that's why this application has been framed as it has. I'll just quickly, for a minute, go on from the design, you may want to go back to that. Page five just shows, well, it shows not just, but details of grading, utilities and drainage structures. It's important to understand that the engineer has done a HydroCAD, full HydroCAD modeling for this design. I didn't give you a copy of that, it's many pages long. I'm not sure whether, the most likely thing is the town engineer will want to review that, that would be the normal thing for this. But we have done that, we have done that work, we have done, the applicant has done all the test borings, soil testing, and I have a paper report from Morse Engineering describing the soil testing, which I received on September 11th, so that's going to be submitted after this hearing and you'll have it in your materials to review.
Okay.
And I, finally, I already talked briefly about the final page, which shows you all the sort of catchment areas for stormwater, and that's just a quick review of what this plan contains.
That's true.
So at this point, you may want to just ask questions, or I don't know if Greg Morse wants to add anything.
I was just going to say, if we could go to the board for questions and then, any com, you know, brief comments?
Just real, real quick, just before you start, and to Marion's point, I did hear back from the town engineer taking a look, and what she did say was, she commented on that watershed delineation plan, but did note that there was no stormwater technical report showing that the runoff conditions of the existing condition are equal or greater than that of the proposed. So we'll want to see all of that kind of documentation.
Right.
You know, containing the water runoff into the two drywalls, you know, we'll want to see what the capacity of those wells are, we'll want to see the soil testing. So if you've got all of that on hand, great, we'll want to take a look at that, but that was just her initial review of the materials that were provided.
Okay, and Greg is on this call, so he's hearing this. So I believe, well, we have the full HydroCAD modeling, but I can't tell you whether everything you just asked for is in that report or whether there's maybe something else. But that's fine, we will, we will produce whatever is required and work with Marina Fernandez on that and then get back to the planning board on that.
Any questions from Marion? I do have, Greg, I do have a couple of questions.
Marion, how did you arrive or how did they arrive and how many additional parking spaces were desired here? Was it based on what would fit in this piece of land or was it based on an analysis of need?
I think, well, Falcone's here, but I've been certainly in discussions about this. I think it's based on what will fit, and it's limited, that's the problem. I mean, the question initially for me was, would it even be worth it to go to all the expense of building a parking area on this site with understanding that all zoning relief would be required as well as site plan modification approval? And I, what I do remember from our previous application was how limited the parking was and how much discussion we had at that time. Just for example, with one neighbor about where would guests park, you know, how can you assure us that, you know, they're not going to be parking in front of our house or whatever? And, you know, we could provide only the, only just barely enough parking for maybe a guest at a time. So we didn't do a calculation, as far as I know, of the number of parking spaces that were required. I do not think that you could do much more than this on this site.
I'm not asking for more, actually, I'm asking really maybe to have less. And the reason is just the amount of paving and the lighting associated with it.
Oh, I, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm just trying to right, right-size the amount. So I think I was on the board when this came through before, and I recall having discussion about dedicated spaces for the residential units, and is that the case in fact? Is there one space per residential unit dedicated to the residents?
Yes.
And that's going to remain the same?
I don't know.
Yes.
I believe so.
Okay. And then how many businesses are there?
How many tenants do you have right now, business tenants? Because they can all, this can vary, so that's the problem. It's hard for me to answer your question because this year there might be a tenant, tenant X.
Okay, so I'm just trying to.
They have different types of businesses.
Okay, so how many square feet of commercial? Because if we think about how we normally size our parking lots, it's based on the square, you know, one unit per 250 square feet for business, right? And let's just say, because these are small units, it's one per resident? And I'd be curious to know how many that tells you you would need if you were doing, you know, if this were zoned for commercial, for example.
Right, so I understand your question, I can't answer it off the top of my head, but I will get, I will get you that information. I know exactly what you're talking about because we did it during the prior application. And so that makes more sense because that's how many square feet of commercial, how many square feet of cafe, and for the catering business as well, in addition to the five small apartments, which have dedicated parking spaces. There is still some question of guest parking, but that's, you know, if it's there, it's there.
It's just how you arrive at the number I'm concerned with, just to right-size it. And if, did you hear, did the Falcones hear from neighbors about a problem of parking on the street since they've opened the property? I mean, has that led to part of it, or is it more coming from the businesses themselves about how much parking there is?
I don't know, Bob would say, I know every time I'm there, I'm.
It's also.
Bob, you mind coming up and just seeing?
Yes, thank you, appreciate it. I'm also curious how the, I know there's some question about how the residential would do in that location, so I'm curious, are you always leased up in those residential units?
The residential leasing is, it's been one empty three years. And the five apartments, the house, as soon as we bought it and renovated it, it was, we had 20 applications.
Okay.
As you know, there's a lot of need for housing in Milton, I'll just say that.
Yeah, and those were small units, so I think it's just.
They're very small, they're one-bedroom units.
Yeah.
Couples, few of them are couples, most are singles.
Okay.
And the traffic coming around the corner was dangerous, there's been a few accidents there, mostly to protect the caterer, has issues with people coming to pick up food.
Okay.
The Revive Restaurant, I think, yeah, Revive, constantly, it's coming and going all the time.
Okay.
So that helps. And I believe those floors are about almost 3,000 feet each.
Okay.
There's 3,000 feet, about 3,000 feet of office space upstairs, and right now it's divided into three different offices.
Okay. And then, so the first floor is all commercial too, right?
First floor is the restaurant.
That's another 3,000 square.
And then the caterer.
Okay.
And the middle floor is the five residenials.
So is the first floor 6,000 square?
It's a little less. First floor is smaller because it's, it sits back.
Yeah.
It's back in, just Jim knows.
Which I have to say, it's so nice to see such vibrant businesses there, everyone you know, all your tenants are, you know, Cooking with Stephanie, Revive, everybody in town loves, Beth Bork, you know, who's there, everyone really loves those businesses. So it's, it is nice to see a historic building.
Yeah.
Just really having ultimate best use.
If we could have bought that house when we bought the building, we tried, trust me, took us a couple of years, but that's, we would have had this plan the same, we thought about it.
But that is.
It just was not available.
I did want to mention, because I forgot to say this, that I have submitted a photometric plan.
I wanted, I had a question about that, too.
And so you may, I know you will have questions about the lighting and the height of the pole is, all the features, you know, the height of the pole, the type of fixture, generally what it would be like, it's supposed to be dark sky compliant, that's all on that plan, but you need to enlarge it on your computer, and it wasn't much point in my handing out small copies over here, but you want to enlarge it and look at it carefully, and then you may have questions already.
Yeah, I do have one.
So a calculation, I think, of what is existing parking, because I did notice along the side, and I couldn't remember if that was in the original plan, which I thought was very creative, a 10-minute pickup, 10-minute limit for parking.
That's correct.
So for quick, you know, somebody grabbing a smoothie or a coffee at Revive or short-term parking, so just a total count of all the, of all the spaces.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Is exactly the right question.
Right, right.
And Marion, one other thing I would ask is, I'm just looking at the approved site plan and just trying to like back into the parking conversation, and it says that it's basically as sufficient spaces as deemed adequate by the Board of Appeals.
Right.
So it would be good to see what their findings were at the time to kind of come up with the parking.
Right, and I know why I can do this because I have, I have a lot of information from the Board of Appeals, the analysis that we presented, the justification, et cetera, et cetera. But there's no question that in the course of doing that, my feeling was that it would have been much more favorable to have been able to have more parking.
Okay, if, so understanding Cheryl's point, 100%, you know, using the zoning as a guide, but there is an element of this being a little bit more up for grabs, because I suspect that our parking requirements are super, super, a lot of parking, so.
And I appreciate that, too, and it's really just for comparative purposes, I think that on-the-ground information's the most useful as far as what the need is and, you know, that safety of rounding the corner, you know, and being able, type of business that is in there, it's all very tied to the site, you know, so what, it's in the zoning, you know, is very generic, but what is the condition on the site and the tenant mix, I think is what the CBA is going to be interested in, too. So I, you know, Marion, a little, I think you appreciate what, just context for the number of parking spaces.
I'm basically going to do the same thing I did before, and I understand why you're asking for it. I mean, appreciate the fact that you're willing to have this initial meeting, give me these questions so that I know what is, you know, what I really need to focus on, but I will get that and I will get it quickly because I can go back and look at what we did before and then just add in the additional spaces. As far as how many are needed, I have to wait and see what that analysis comes out to be, but, you know, we are losing four. So it's not, I mean, the parking lot has more spaces than 15, but we're losing, I think, four spaces.
Understood.
So we have to replace those spaces.
So I just have a couple more, and I'm sorry, Marion, just trying to stick to our tight agenda tonight.
We are, yeah, exactly, so we're going to try to wrap up by nine, but I know.
And I just want to ask if you would look at the photometric plan again, and you, Marion, know how we went through, in particular, the Goddard School most recently, about really trying not to overlay a parking area, having controls that will dim it down after certain hours, and, you know, so that we're not looking at people having in their backyard, you know, a parking lot that's lit. I know light spill is one thing, but you will still see a parking, parking lighting, but there's at least four fixtures here, and so.
It could be on motion detectors, too, possibly.
Yeah.
And the lights be off at a certain hour or not?
If these are, if you can have the residential parking spaces closest to the building, then, and the businesses are, hours end at six or whenever they end, you know, then you can have it on a sensor after that, if somebody's parking in the lot, they're visiting somebody in the building. But just so that they're not lit up beyond what they're needed, I think it's just something for you to come back with, it's not on here right now, but Marion, if you go back, you remember the lighting supplier or lighting consultant for the Goddard, and I went back and forth, and you should have those emails about the discussion, so if you just refresh that.
And the current parking lot, I think, has, is dimmed or turned off. I mean, so this was also an issue before. I think that what we were worried about was, and we did find a resolution of, was the fact that there are residential tenants who could come in at any hour of the night and need to be safe, but you could probably designate certain areas for that and keep the lighting at a minimum for safety.
Yeah, I think.
We'll just have to talk.
We can work on that, it's not a problem.
Yeah, and then the other thing, I, and I just think the landscaping plan could use some additional thought. All I'm providing wrapping it, I think, is may do a job of blocking headlights, which I would want to have happen.
Yep.
But having a little more interest towards the neighbors, you know, so that they're not just looking at.
Soldiers.
And that's it for me, thank you.
So maybe, let's see what we can come up with, going to answer to that question.
All right, Sean, and then Maggie.
I just have a few, I just have a few really quick, and I'll make them, I'll make them fast. First, I think it's a good improvement to the property because parking in front of that building is often difficult and dangerous, so I think this is a good idea. I would have a question for Greg. I'm just curious why the design of the storm drainage and the new parking lot is to move all of the stormwater towards the entry and then try to collect them in the two drywells? And my concern would be if you have a tremendous storm, it's probably not going to get captured in the drywells, it's probably going to move right through that opening and down into the existing parking lot. So it's a real question for your engineer, if you could answer that.
Sure, so when we did the drainage design on this, at the entrance of this new parking lot, we put two catch basins and then a series of 16 drywells underneath the parking lot. We ran the HydroCAD calculations on this for the two, the 10, the 25, the N100-year storm event, and we have those calculations documenting that we're compliant with pre-versus-post rates and volumes of runoff.
Okay, Greg, so you have 16 drywells throughout?
That's correct, 16 cultech chambers with crushed stone and two catch basins located in the parking lot.
Yeah, Greg, they're not showing on the documents that we have, at least I don't see them, but I'll look further at those, but they're not on the documents that we have here. What I can see is the two drywells at the entrance to the, to the new parking lot, but not, not cultech chambers. So thanks for that answer. And my second question is really, and I do agree with Cheryl's questions on the lighting, 12-foot high light poles, just want to make sure that we manage light for anybody that lives in this home next to it or anybody that could be affected by the light. My last question is with regard to the parking, will it be designated as certain parking areas are for certain usage? Is that, is that the intent?
We're going to have to move a couple of the residential parking spots into the parking lot because the ones we're losing are the residential. On the plan, they're marked as E for employees, and then we have residential. The residential along the fence from the back door, because they go in the back door, that's a, that's the handicapped entrance.
Okay.
To the elevator.
Okay.
So we will have some residential in there, in that parking lot in the beginning.
Okay.
And then the employees and the customers will be in the main parking lot.
Okay.
The employees parking in the back is stacked right now against the fence.
I see.
And that's what Marion stated earlier about, you have the back in and out to get, I mean, it works, but it's, it's dangerous.
Okay, and I see you lose five spaces.
Yes, we lose five.
I think it's five, yeah.
Yeah, we lose five.
Okay, that's all.
And the dumpster will stay there, the enclosed dumpster.
Okay.
Well, maybe the lighting could be gie- Well, maybe the lighting could be geared to where the resident, well, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we can do that.
The lighting will be controlled, and then as terms of height of light poles, I know it's always an issue. You know, I, we talked about it a little bit, we'll talk about it some more. It needs to be safe, it needs to be as minimal as possible. So you always have to find the best solution that you can. And I will take another look at it, see whether we think this is the best we want. The screening to screen the lighting, but we'll look at it again.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, Maggie?
So I had similar comments. One, I was just interested in knowing, because parking is such a big thing. Have you, because I remember vaguely following this a little bit when it was being discussed, that, you know, they're micro units, so they're smaller, so there'd be fewer people, so there'd be less cars. So just from your experience, do you see the need for cars decreasing? For, in the residence, not even just in your project, but for me moving forward to look at other projects? The town is looking at reducing parking requirements.
I understand.
So, so in reality, though, how many spots do you need? You said some of them are two people in your micro.
Yeah, these are one bedrooms.
One bedroom.
And we only allow one car per person.
And that works. So you have five.
It works.
Five units, so.
Yep. And actually, I think one unit doesn't even have a car.
So five, and then, you know, shared parking for visitors.
Mm-hmm.
So that was just for my own personal knowledge. And again, the landscape plan, 41 Emerald Green, arborvitae's, isn't a great landscape plan. And so having a variety of plants, and I'd be afraid that because, you know, you're on the edge of the Blue Hills, arborvitae, Emerald Green, arborvitae's, the deer eat, they eat the first, like, six feet. So then it would not serve the purpose. And also, I was thinking it might be nice to have more native plants and maybe could be helpful to have some rain gardens up there.
If there was room. I don't know how much room there was. They can look at that, though. And rocky, very legible.
So a couple of you have said you'd like more variety in the, the screening, which usually is evergreen. Because it has to be evergreen in order to be blocking in the winter, but it doesn't have to be.
But it doesn't necessarily all have to be evergreen. Some deciduous shrubs have dense branching structures, and even though they don't have leaves on them, they still serve a purpose.
So I'll make my pitch one more time about having, no offense to Mr. Morris, but not having the engineer do the landscape plan, but actually having the landscape architect or landscape designer do the landscape plan.
And there is a beautiful tree right in the back. I know you're losing one, but there is another really beautiful tree that is in close proximity. It would be nice to just see some sort of protection plan for that particular tree because it's a old tree and gives probably really nice screening to the.
You want a back of the house?
The one in the back.
Yeah, house will be back of the house, yeah.
Yeah, it's a really.
Light will provide a protection.
Yeah, protection around that as.
That would be on the page that has the construction details if it's not on there now.
Actually, that's another question I have, is how many trees would be removed?
I'm not sure.
Just one, according to.
There's one large tree. If you look at the plant, you can see the canopy of the tree continues to be shown, even though it's going to be removed.
Right, and it's on the other one.
It's basically, other than that, you know.
Mostly scrub trees. He had a structure there. Me and our owner of the house had a structure built there.
So he cleared some, I think, I mean, all I know is that he had a scape.
And then there's another beautiful tree, but it's behind where the log, little wall edging is. It's tucked back into that woody area, so. That's not a, that won't be disturbed.
I don't believe so.
No, it's not in that area.
I really.
And it appears to be very level, so.
Yeah, it's, that's level for you.
It's level, which was surprising. I was actually peeking over the fence this afternoon. And so there's not a need for a retaining wall, which I also.
No. It'll all be graded up away here.
Yeah.
This is the tree that needs to be protected.
Yeah.
And this is the tree that's being removed, right?
I'm not going anywhere near that tree.
It's just that little, you see that little shed, and then it's scrubby growth around there. But so, we did look at trees to be, as a starting point, and that's why you need to fix those so that you can see what the big ones are. And, you know, certainly going to be planting a lot of trees. The question is, if you'd like a little bit more artistic landscaping? And I can see that you're asking for that, and we'll go back and ask.
All right, so I think we have, we've asked some good questions here. So I think we would love for you to come back in the future. And I'm thinking, the 20th is a pretty full agenda, so I don't know, what is your thought on when you would want to come back, Marion?
Well, we don't necessarily have to wait until I have a date for the Board of Appeals.
Right.
But you need to understand that we're not going to complete this until the Board of Appeals has their hearing.
Sure.
So just keep that in your, as you think about the calendar. We don't necessarily, no, I don't think we have to come back for your next agenda, which is very crowded. But maybe early October.
So we have a meeting on the 12th?
The 12th? When's your, I'm sorry, do you have dates yet for October meetings?
Our regular scheduled meeting is, is the 12th?
It'll be the 12th and the 26th.
Yeah.
Board of Appeals, it's when?
We don't have a date yet from the Board of Appeals, but I was told that to expect it would be mid to late October.
Okay.
So you want to just try to come back on the 12th with the information as requested? And then see what other questions you might have, and then we have to hold.
See where we are at.
We don't have to continue to add.
Certainly.
By then, I should have a date.
Okay.
And try to give you as much as we can though for the 12th.
All right, so why don't we continue?
We've got some members of the public.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. If somebody would like to, if there are any questions from the public at this point, or?
Some of us want to speak. I'd like to speak.
Okay, great. All right, let's welcome and.
Yeah, come on up and speak into the microphone, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Nick Sessow, and my family lives at 688 Randolph Ave. And I myself bought the house on Randolph Ave in the 70s. And with, with all due respect to Ms. McGetrick, this is all about quality of life, because this area is residentially zoned. And, you know, we can't pretend that the parking lot is not in someone's backyard, because it will be. So when you move to Milton, you come to a town that is better than where you came from. And that was the case for me. I grew up in Boston. And when you invest your family's lives in Milton, you should be able to have an expectation that if your neighborhood is residential, that your backyard doesn't become your neighbor's non-conforming businesses 22-car parking lot. This, the Cookie Factory at Bent's over the years has been granted numerous variances. And I can see that it'll just be one thing right after another. And I think at this point, they're overdoing this. And I think it's a shame if you folks actually let this happen because this parking lot is going to be, the cars are going to be parked 20 feet from my family's backyard. And you talk about Randolph Ave and how bad a road it is. It is a bad road, and for those of us who live there, the only peace we get is our backyards. So my backyard, my family's backyard, I don't think should be someone else's parking lot that I have to look at all the time. And that's basically all I have to say. And I say, shame on you if you let it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a letter for the chair.
That's great.
I'm sorry, I don't have copies for everybody.
We'll circulate them.
My name is Paul Hogan, I'm an attorney representing the neighbors at 678, which would now be the butter. They were surprised to learn about this. Oh, by the way, I live at 56 Pier Street in Milton. I'm the former chair of Milton School Committee, and I was on the building for 12 years. With Mr. Shewinski, I tried to build the animal shelter a few years ago, but it didn't happen. The prices were like 2X times what we had. But anyway, I represent the owners of 678 Randolph Ave. Emma Mai and Trung Mai, they're both here, but they've asked me to speak for them. And some of the concerns they have, you've hit in some of your questions. And I gave you my last copy, so.
Oh, sorry.
My fault, it's my.
Yeah, I'll hang out to that, thank you.
If they had a choice, they would ask you not to, not to approve this. They've been living there for nine years, they have three children, and they have the backyard. They're the most closest to the project. The only map I have here is this one, which I think you're familiar with, and we're right here. So we're right beside the property that was just acquired. And so, you know, they're concerned about their privacy, they're concerned about headlights and what it might do to property value. They have some questions too, and maybe, maybe you can sort this out in the future hearing. Why do we need such a large parking lot is the question. Revive Bakery has been successful, and it's mostly a takeout eatery, and there exist seven spaces on the street. Most people come in, get out, and leave. The proposed parking lot is far away from the front door, and they don't envision people parking in the back and walking so far to the business. I heard the discussion tonight about maybe moving that to the residential people. Now, their concern too is whether or not, you know, Falcone Company, which is very successful, evolved or very, well, reversed, might be doing something more with the building. Apparently not, that that was a concern when we walked here. So if it was to be built, the Mies would be looking for certain conditions to be included. Ideally, they would agree to a smaller parking lot that is further away from their property line. They'd like a nice fence, a tall fence, probably the one that matches the fence that exists there now. They like the idea of the trees being planted, and we appreciate your comments and concerns about that tonight. And the lighting, I think that's a major concern, the height of the poles, you know, bright lights. Prior, a resident just talked about how, how nice the backyard is, and theirs is very nice as well, and they're concerned about that. And we heard tonight, and Ellen passed a note to me, about the storm water. And apparently, you know, if it's going back towards the road, that's one thing, but if it's headed our way, that's a real problem. So in an ideal world, they'd like to see it none. But if it does happen, these concerns, if they're looked at, would be something that would be interesting. I don't know if you also.
I just wanted to say that currently, they have a really nice wooden fence between Bent's and 672, and they have the light affixed to the fence. So I think that works well, and it would be much nicer than like 12-foot tall poles in our backyard. I mean, it's going to have a lot of light to our yard. So we can't really see the people parking back there. I mean, our yard looks right at the fence where Bent's is through 672. And if they had that similar kind of fence, I think it would be better. And then landscaping, but also ideally, we would want no, no parking lot ideally. But if there is going to be one, I feel like the parking is kind of excessive with 22 spots back there. I don't know why they can't just add some more, not quite so many.
I'd also, I'd also like to add that the proposed parking lot would look directly into our bathroom. You just open up the shade and.
Our kitchen or back of our house is going to be facing the.
In terms of privacy, having a parking lot there without any fencing, without any barriers would, would erode all of our privacy.
And I also, we talked about how Randolph Ave is busy and maybe should be rezoned, but we all have families that live there, all of our neighbors have kids. It's on both sides of the street, it is very residential. So regardless of what other people think about Randolph Ave, it's a part of Milton and part of the community with lots of things, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Share the comments.
Sessow, one question.
Yes.
For the next meeting.
Sorry, yes, your name please, sorry.
I also live at 688 Randolph Ave. For the next meeting, will we get another one of those handouts that we've got in the mail? Are we going to get another one of those so we know when that meeting is? So we can come in.
What the board will do tonight is continue the meeting too, and you'll know the date and the time. So moving forward, you'll know when that is.
Which, yeah.
And then that'll be on the agenda, that's posted on the public meeting calendar for whatever that meeting is.
Okay. Now, now the next meeting, is there a meeting that's just about this kind of? I also heard that the MBTA situation is going to have its own meeting? Is that correct?
We're going to have, well, we have a public hearing process, but we'll, I think October 12th is when we're thinking that we would continue.
For this one?
Yes. So we can have multiple.
It won't be exclusive, though.
It won't be exclusive.
Oh, okay. But that'll be here?
Yes.
Same time?
We don't know, well, our public hearings, we're going to vote shortly that.
Okay.
So it will be probably likely 7:05.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, can I have a motion to continue the public hearing? For 79 Pleasant Street, site plan approval to, I think that, we said the 12th, right, of October?
I think at 7:05.
At 7:05.
Can I, can I ask one question, Marion, before you continue with this motion? Did you have another, is this the only attempt of how to park additional parking spaces?
I'm not, I know they, I don't know, but I'll ask the engineer what else they looked at. I'm listening to all the comments tonight, so, you know, of course we'll go back and see what else. In terms of what, do we look at other shapes, you mean, that kind of thing?
Exactly, exactly. There's often numerous configurations to achieve parking. And, you know, as a result of some of the comments, you know, one of the things that's really difficult, I'm actually looking at, at Marion, I'm looking at Google Earth here to try to understand the location of the homes of the residents that have spoken tonight. And, you know, obviously, what we can't see on the plan is how close the neighbor is, Marion, right here? It's not drawn in. So we don't know that unless we do something like this. But I'd be curious to see if the engineer had another attempt in, in such a way, possibly, you know, create additional parking for the Falcone's property, but possibly, you know, do it in a manner that doesn't take a parking lot into what the neighbors described as their backyard. And not, not a lot of engineering. You know, the engineer can do something really, really simple and quick. We have an architect here who does this stuff all the time, but just a, you know.
Nice job there, though, I think.
You want to stamp this? Stamp it, I'll build it, yeah. But I think it'd be helpful, you know, if we, if we just have a really, maybe another simple attempt at trying to increase parking without creating a lot that is as impactful.
Sort of an L shape. It's an L shape, and maybe it could be whatever.
I think to, to your point, if you could try and minimize the amount of pavement, you would make that come back straight and have a double-loaded.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Parking spaces. And that's what I picked up from your little sketch there. And I guess the question then is just, I mean, obviously, they have to rebuild the fence and all that, but really, the question is the stormwater at that point, right? And having to move the dumpster. But I think it's worth a site plan study to see how that would work.
It actually could be, it could be less pavement. There'd probably be less stormwater as a result of less pavement. I don't know that it would be any more expensive, it could potentially be less expensive.
I didn't, I can't see your sketch, but you're talking about moving in the back line and moving it over on the front towards the existing lot?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, you know, the way that this, the approach to this added parking was to really almost leave everything that was existing as is.
Right.
You know, what I'm suggesting is to possibly. You know, what I'm suggesting is to possibly take what as, take the existing area that you have and, you know, widen it so that you can park, you know, in both directions, right and left. And I'd be curious to see what parking result you might get.
Yep.
You know, I mean, the way that the employee parking is there is not ideal either, you know, when you're. So it just would be, it would be an interesting study. I don't think it's too complicated, and.
Well, and I think the other interesting thing about it is it points the cars a bit more towards, I think, the animal shelter site versus away from the single-family homes. I'm looking at the town GIS map right now.
That's the horse farm. This is a huge.
Oh, the horse farm, okay.
This is a huge area of land up behind here. Actually, you don't see that on the plan either. But absolutely, you're right, and I'm aware. I heard the neighbors tonight. I know exactly where their house is. And when I go to the Board of Appeals, I always see them on the GIS plan. I didn't do that with you, but that's what the discussion's about. How can this, if it can be distanced more from those two neighbors who are on that side? And also then, is there a redesign that would bring it closer to the other parking lot perhaps, but still work well? I did hear the comments about fencing and lighting and so forth. I like, I also agree. I think the lighting and the fencing is nice in the fence site. So let's see what we can do with that. And finally, I just want to comment that we absolutely are not proposing rezoning. This is an alternative. It's not necessarily, you know, going to fly. But the proposal is don't rezone. Instead, do something to change the rear here to increase the parking area. But maybe we can do it in an even better design. We'll look, we'll go back and look. And we have some time, at least I do, because we're not going to be even be before the Board of Appeals to the probably end of October. And I would really like to have, if there are going to be design changes, it would be great to have some of those wiped out to be able to show the Board of Appeals. We're going to have the same discussion and even more, but probably with them. So I appreciate the time you spent with us tonight.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And thank you for the comments from the neighbors.
Okay, so it'll be October 12th.
Yeah, and we have a motion. We need to make them.
Yes, I'll make that motion that you outlined, which is, what's the address that we've had this on?
79 Pleasant Street.
Okay, so I will move to continue the site plan approval hearing for 79 Pleasant Street and 672 Randolph Ave to October 12th at 7:05.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now moving on to our agenda. Next, we have our, thank you very much. The discussion of the local historic districts under new business. Thank you. Study committee, and we'd like to welcome Larry Loffler to the table. And thank you for patiently waiting. You were here early.
Oh, my God. Thank you for inviting me.
State your name and address.
Sure, sure, both of you. I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to say, so let me first start with, we've spent two years.
How about your name? Your name, address.
I think she mentioned it, but I am Larry Loffler, the chairman of the Local Historic District Study Committee. And for two years, our committee has been studying the differences. First, the difference between federal, state, and local historic districts. There is no local historic district in Milton at this time. Each of these districts has certain criteria that has to be met and certain powers that they have. So when we set out, we first looked at the federal, the six federal areas. Milton Hill, the cemetery, Scotts Woods, there are six of them. And as we went through and talked to all of the stakeholders here in town, Jen Dougherty from the Mass Historical Commission was a big help. We realized that there is so much to protect here. What are we going to protect? How are we going to protect it? And what does that mean? So two years later, right now, as of yesterday, the proposal that our committee put forward to the state was accepted. And that happened yesterday in a meeting, so we will get notice of that. This begins our public speaking period. Because on December 6th, I believe, the town meeting, that's when it will be ultimately voted on. So this is my first discussion with another committee. Although both of us, both of you spoke at our committees, at our committee, and were invaluable. And for that reason, we chose Milton Village as the area that we would like to designate as our first local historic district. We have no intention of doing anything like, for instance, Nantucket, where you can't have, where everything has to be the same. We are not proposing any of those rules. And our proposal states that after we finish our work, the group that comes behind us actually makes and pays attention to those rules and enforces them. We are just putting forth the fact that we want to protect Milton Village. It is historic in so many different ways. Nationally, it is historic in so many different ways. One of the first places where industry used different and new techniques. The Baker Chocolate Factory was one of them. The use of brick rather than wood to create industrial sites. The use of water as a power source. It's really very fascinating. Milton Village is, there's not a lot there. It is a commercial zone with some residential properties. So where we are right now is that in the next, before the end of this month, we will have a letter that will go out to every single property owner in Milton Village describing, we're going to give them the proposal. We're going to tell them what we think we want to do. We're going to ask for their input. We're going to do a survey. And that is really the beginning of the public forward aspect of this. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to clarify, you were required to come to the planning board with this, right, for the?
I was told not to come to the planning board. Because the rules, frankly, I'm a volunteer. I think that all you people are as well. The state rules and the local rules and the county rules are so conflicting. So I was told by the state that I had to first speak to the select board. The select board named the Local Historic District Study Committee. So we had to respond to them first. Secondly, we are part of the Historical Commission, an appendage to that, and we were supposed to talk to them second. And then we were going to come to the planning board. So you guys get me first.
So just to, and I don't disagree with Mr. Loffler about the confusion and the conflict. The 40C at this, at this stage in the game basically says the local committee, once it has preliminary report, submits that preliminary report to Mass Historic, which you've done, and they've given it the thumbs up, which is awesome. And also submit to the planning board.
That's what I thought, okay.
And that's all it says. So.
I submitted to the planning board, but I submitted to the state.
Right. So you all don't necessarily have a statutory requirement to hold a hearing or to do anything. It's really meant more as an opportunity for you to take a look at it. If you have any recommendations, comments, questions for the local committee in advance of their public hearing, which they are statutorily required to have, and I think you guys are scheduled for November. You know, that would be sort of the opportunity that you've got the thing ahead of time. You have a chance to take a look at it, talk amongst yourselves. If you've got questions or comments or anything, to get those to the committee, you know, in advance of the public hearing. There's no requirement to do that. You actually receiving the thing is all she wrote. But I think, you know, given all the work that you all have done in Milton Village, and I think the tremendous interest in this topic, you know, it might be worth, you know, looking into a little bit more than what the statute requires. And I think, you know, Mr. Loffler, thank you very much for coming, even though they told you not to. You just have had your hands on it, you know, for as long as anybody. So it's good just to sort of get that introduction. And if the board has any questions, you know, to be available for that.
I do have something I'd like to say. I recall back to even the master plan, where the master plan recommends looking at local historic districts because the national registered districts are wonderful, but they don't provide protections. And that was something that we talked a lot about when we did the Milton Village overlay zoning. And we said at that time, we'll make the zoning such it doesn't incentivize any tear down of anything historic. In fact, give a bonus to encourage preservation. But the real teeth will come from a district. And so I think now is extraordinarily timely as we're looking at the MBTA communities because that law doesn't supersede the local historic district. So if, you know, we can offer this protection to this area, which we've all ident, I think many people have identified needs this protection. While we'd like to see some, you know, neighborhood-oriented, small-scale redevelopment in that area, we don't want to lose something as a result of that, right? So we can do both. And this allows us, I think, to do both. And so, thank you. Thanks for inviting me to your committee meeting some time ago. And we spoke about this then. And so I'd like for us to, we can look at the details, but I think conceptually, I'd like for us to say that we are definitely supportive of this and kind of look at the details.
And I appreciate that support from our chair, from you, Cheryl. I appreciate that support. Here's what I think, and being a volunteer, first time through this, it's a bit watery. And it will change. And once the public gets involved, there's going to be some angry people. There's going to be some thrilled people. That's public discourse. We are ready for that. And the document, when I get back the document from the state, it's got, I'm supposed to get a letter in the next day or so. And it's going to make some adjustments to what we proposed. But through this period of time, before we get to the actual voting on this, things are going to change. People will step forward, and people will have opinions, and we will adjust to those opinions. But the feeling in our committee is this is what we should be doing. This should be our first choice in this town. We should be following what the planning board has been working on. And we should be united in this. We're not looking to change anything. We're looking to protect our, we're looking to protect the culture of Milton that's been around since the 1600s. And we're thinking about the Milton culture in the 2100s. And what did we do during our time to protect that? So that when our grandchildren are here, living in the town, if they're so lucky, that they're going to have a town of Milton like we understood, where it was inclusive and had historical parts and had the ability to grow and change. Because that's what's happened over the last 200 years. So there's no expectation. It's not going to change. Let's protect what we can protect and give guidelines to that.
I think giving the guidelines to the change is really the important part. And they're guidelines with some teeth.
And you know what? What's great, Cheryl, guidelines aren't on my watch. The guidelines come, there's a committee that comes after this. And they're the ones that actually set the guidelines. We set the parameters for the guidelines, and we talk about that. But we don't set them into law as the next group will.
So I have a question because it is labeled Milton Village, but you do highlight Elliott Street?
Yes, part of Elliott Street.
So that was my question. So it is not going into Central Ave Business District, Central Ave Village?
It doesn't go as far as the Central Ave. Because that's part of the Milton Village overlay. We are following the guidelines of the Milton Village overlay.
Which didn't go to Central Ave.
It didn't, yes, yeah. And how come? I know that's a different.
There's a different overlay there.
Yeah, okay. So that's what.
Well, that can be adjusted, by the way.
In this document, it just talked about the, you know, Crosby Colonials and the houses along Elliott Street. So I just, I know it's a different district that I call it Central Ave and Milton Village. So I just wanted to confirm that it is not in Central Ave.
It is not. It does not go there.
Larry, this represents, Larry, I'm sorry to interrupt, that represents the district, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so it ends just after High Street.
Yeah. Well, High Street was an essential, early essential street, more than Adams Street. It was the main thoroughfare when Hutchinson lived here.
No, thank you. I'll pull it up.
Adams Street came later.
Yeah, I'll just say, Larry, it's great work. Appreciate all the effort because a lot of time went into it. There's a real, there's a real history lesson in here.
It's fascinating.
Families that lived in each of the properties and, you know, it's fantastic. So thanks for putting your time and effort into it. I think it's great. And I'm with Cheryl. I mean, we're here to support this kind of effort that you and the team have put in.
One thing that was asked of me just last week, at our last, we had a meeting, today's Thursday? We had a meeting on Monday, and we got a letter from, I can't remember the exact group, but I think it's the group that represents the Wharf. And they asked us to support the money that's been allocated to rebuild the Milton Jail, the Milton Yacht Club.
So an application before the Community Preservation Committee?
Correct.
I'm this board's representative to that committee.
And that was sponsored by the Historical Commission.
Yeah, so that's one of the applications.
So we were asked to do that, and we see no reason as a committee not to support that because that building needs help.
It does, yeah.
And it is historical. So does that F.A. King property that's kind of dilapidated.
The Hat House.
The old hat shop.
The Swift Hat Shop next door, which is sad.
Is that what that was? Is that?
It was the oldest, it was one of the oldest, it's one of the last commercial, existing commercial buildings in the country. And it was a premier hat shop back in the day. So it was one of the.
And then, then a little bit more recently, it was where the nutshell was started because my mother-in-law and grandmother-in-law started the nutshell in that building with the little book room.
It's a great location, and it's so sad to see that building.
There was all sorts of, when we did the master plan implementation committee, did a planning study a few years ago in that area. And there was talk of all different ideas of what could be there. And I'm still hopeful that we'll see some things.
Something, anything.
You know, you have so many wonderful things coming together, a little waterfront, a bike path. You have small business. It could really be much more vibrant mix of things than what we have today. But that's what the overlay was intended to help. And, but I, you know, I think, I know we have a lot on our agenda tonight. I'm not sure if you.
Do you need a vote from us?
Yeah, do you need a letter or a vote or?
Or anything? Do you need a vote of our support for you moving forward or? Well, I think we are one of the few communities, people are surprised that Milton, with all of the historic properties that we have, that we don't have a local historic district. And I think this is a start for maybe could what be, become others.
Exactly.
Setting, you know, an example of how you do it without being overly restrictive to property.
And that is the key.
And that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
I like the way this is being done. It's just, let's just establish a local historic district and start there. I like the way this is being done. It's just, let's just establish a local historic district and start there.
And, and the controversy within our committee was because we had one member that wanted one specific area. I think because the member lived in that area and had, was on that area group. But it didn't make sense to the entire group, especially considering what Milton Planning Committee was working on.
Okay, so then.
Motion to support?
Then I would, I guess for us to think about and talk maybe again is if, if we need to delve into any of what the recommendations are.
Yeah, and I think we could look them over and offer our comments to Tim if there's anything prior to your public hearing.
We, we are going to need some help. We need to create a PowerPoint. So when we present at the town committing, at the town meeting, we have something. I'm creative in many ways. I'm not a PowerPoint guy.
There's some members on the Historical Commission who might be able to possibly help with that.
Perfect. I'll, I'll, we'll talk afterwards.
Yeah, don't look at me.
Good question for you? Why'd you stop at 23 Canton Ave and not keep going a few houses beyond that?
Because of the overlay.
Oh, that's where the district stops?
The business district. It's staying with the business district.
23 isn't commercial, right? It's next to the old DeWolf Building?
It's an attorney's office.
Oh, that isn't, that isn't commercial?
It's commercial, yeah.
Ah, alright, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to support the Modern Historic Study Committee's recommendation to designate Milton Village as a historic district.
Is there a second?
A second.
On paper?
Hi. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
You guys have long meetings.
Thank you.
It's got the diehards now.
We'll have any comments that members have to share with you.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So our next, so moving on, we are going to go to our old business, which is the MBTA Communities' update. Tim, do you want to?
So I'm promoting Zoe and Matt from UTIL. And they'll be able to present on some of the work. I actually missed Matt and did Mary instead, so let me see if I can.
I got Matt.
Thank you.
We're both here. I think Matthew just will need a moment to unmute and get ready.
There he is.
Can we turn up the volume a little bit on Zoe?
I can also speak more closely to my mic if that helps.
Just a little bit better, Zoe. Thank you and welcome. And I'm grateful for your patience and waiting for the other items.
So yeah, if, if y'all just want to take it away, we can get started.
Yeah, happy too.
Do you have the ability to show your screen?
So I'm going to go ahead and try my screen. Just make sure this works.
There we go.
You're all seeing the screen okay now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so I'm going to dive right in. We are going to just kind of do a quick recap for you and then we're going to dive into the options that we've tested based on the feedback we got from you last time. And we do also have some build-out visualizations that we'll walk you through that are related to the, the sort of core feedback that we got. So the first three options, just to sort of point out, are going to be repeating the ones that we shared with you last time so that we can come back to them for reference if needed. Okay, so with that in mind, just an update on timeline. We're really aiming to vote or kind of get to some level of agreement that would enable us to then, you know, make any remaining small tweaks and submit to the state for pre-adoption review on the 22nd. That's important to be able to get some indication of the state's feedback before going to the sort of adoption itself to get to compliance by the end of the year. And just as a reminder, this is something that came up last time that we did clarify, but I do want to just reiterate it because it's embedded in some of our options. For the purposes of this law, multifamily is defined as one of two things. Either one building that has three or more units or two or more buildings, each of which has two or more units. So we are going to be making use of kind of both of those different definitions for different components. And we did also discuss last time adding lot coverage parameters throughout. For the purposes of the way the model thinks about this, we're going to be using the term building coverage and parking. That is the closest to the meaning of what we have been discussing as lot coverage. And I just point that out so that, you know, the shorthand itself has a different meaning for the model. So just, we're going to be showing you building coverage and parking. You can think about that as lot coverage. That's what, you know, a lot of folks are sort of implicitly think of that way. So what we heard from you last time, a lot of the conversation focused around the small lot residential neighborhoods. There was a lot of concern about incentivizing tear downs or, you know, a desire to avoid anything that would incentivize tear downs. Wanting to see build-out visualizations that showed what that, you know, what the conditions would be like, what, what is, would be allowed and not allowed and how that lands on typical lots in these areas. And then, you know, broadly speaking, a willingness to, if needed, let there be a little bit denser development in Granite Ave, Milton Station, Matapan Station in order to support sort of increase sort of density and like massing and form controls in these existing small lot residential neighborhoods. There's then a couple of specific changes that we were requested to make. One was for Transit Area Triplex, removing the National Historic Properties. Then for, and, and adding a new sort of concept to that, looking at 10,000 square foot minimum lot sizes with a four unit per lot assumption. That's making use of that second definition of multifamily that I went over just a moment ago. Next, for the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, this we sort of let sit for a bit, but there was a desire to sort of explore if in that setting you might reduce density and add a minimum lot size. We can return to that later on. And then for Blue Hills, a desire to kind of add like an expanded area around the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, which we had brought to this group last time, that would capture the two family areas that sort of surround the Blue Hills Parkway. And that in that setting, there was, we were asked to look at three, up to three stories and letting building and parking coverage climb to 60% and a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. So a denser scheme than what we had looked at in the Transit Area Triplex sub-district. And then finally, for Granite Ave, this is again something we have sort of tabled for next time, looking at prioritizing measures that would reduce the building and parking coverage, essentially prioritizing the site plan and potentially allowing a little bit of additional height if that enabled the site plan itself to be a better fit for what you're looking for. So that's the, sort of the tasks that we took with us as we went into those revisions here. So just a quick refresher here, these are all of the sub-districts that we're looking at today, including this green one that was added as the Blue Hills Triplex. That's what's currently, you know, largely single and, and two family units. And then just to sort of remind you about where we're looking at, East Milton Square, Granite Ave, these are unchanged from last time, Milton Station, Matapan Station. Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, this is the one that was added last time that we discussed and then triggered the discussion about expanding that area. The two sub-districts that we have altered for the discussion today are the Transit Area Triplex boundary. We did expand it to include the lots that would be a better fit for that 10,000 square foot minimum. So we grabbed a little bit more of the area that sort of immediately abuts the area we were looking at last time and kept to kind of a continuous street so that there's a sort of coherent sense of the, the logic behind that boundary. And then we did also add that Blue Hills Parkway Triplex sort of buffer area. So as a refresher, this was what we showed you last time. This is the new expanded area that we studied this time. To understand kind of the impacts of that, this is, you know, the, that revised sub-district and you can see that this is showing you the parcel size distribution. So how many parcels are at a given size? So you can see there's a big, sort of, there's not very many parcels that are below 5,000. That's this first line. There are quite a few parcels between 5,000 and 7,500 and then you see it start to sort of trail off. So the thresholds that we studied were 5,000, 7,500 and 10,000 square feet that would carry kind of different rule sets. And just to quickly go through visually, this is, the blue parcels here are the ones that are the 10,000 square foot parcels. If you include 7,500, that would be the expanded blue. If you drop down to something closer to 5,000, it's the vast majority of the area. And then 5,000 is almost all of the parcels. The next thing that we explored as a variant for this one is because we were, you're, we'll see it in a moment, the density that we got back was not, not what we needed to see. So this looks at just the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size with four units as, and crafting a sub-district boundary that is aligned as closely as possible with where those 10,000 square foot parcels exist within the fabric of your, sort of, the, the Matapan Trolley adjacent neighborhoods there. And in this scheme, about 60% of these parcels are eligible with that 10,000 square foot minimum. So it's, you know, a decent yield that can support a reasonable density that won't drag down all the numbers. For the Blue Hills Triplex, this is the area that we studied based on the suggestions that we got last time. This has a very different parcel size distribution. It is weighted heavily towards 5,000 and below. So it's very sensitive to parcel size, minimum parcel size thresholds. And there's a big, you know, drop off as you go up in terms of the overall district density because so many parcels are excluded. So just to visualize that and then I'll get into the, our options. This is looking at just 10,000 square foot parcels and above. As you can see, it's just a handful of parcels. It's mostly the institutional parcels that are present in the neighborhood. It is, is very few parcels are able to contribute at this level. If we drop down to 7,500, still very few, just 15% of parcels. At 5,250, we start to get to something that's, you know, workable with 44% of parcels, parcels being eligible. And then if we drop down to 5,000, we just break half. So even at 5,000, we're still looking at not that many parcels contributing to this district. Okay, so that's all just context studying so we all know what we're talking about. And then this is the sort of the additional model runs that we did based on those parameter changes. So these first three are ones that we presented last meeting. I'm going to skip through them, but we can return to them with, for discussion if needed. And then we have four variants that we want to share with you for discussion tonight. So these are the ones that were shown last meeting. This is the first of the new scenarios that we ran. So I'm going to walk you through, focus on the red text here. Those are the ones that are new or changed. So we have, we've brought our three sort of denser districts back up to that 40 to make sure that we're, we have enough wiggle room to bring the numbers down elsewhere based on the, the suggestions we got. So we've added, this is using that sort of larger Transit Area Triplex sub-district with a tiered approach using the exist, the three units per lot and 7,500 square foot minimum lot size that we showed you last time, but adding a second tier that is four units per lot and 10,000 square foot lots minimum. We did also for these districts, we're suggesting allowing 70% building and lot coverage. That is to, you know, recognize that, that, you know, that's probably what's needed to make these viable for development. Even though the, the, that change is not, the, the model is not super sensitive to that change. That would be our recommendation just to be kind of market viable. And then for the Blue Hills Triplex, that's this new, the district that we were showing in green previously that expands to the west of the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor. We have that set initially at 27 units per acre. That's very, that's more or less a match for three units on a 5,000 square foot lot. The reason we put 27 in there is because it scales with the parcel size. So if you get a large parcel, it scales. It doesn't just peg you to three units, even if you have a much larger parcel. We used a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size per request and three maximum building height of three stories, 60% lot coverage. So these are all, these are what we were asked to look at from the last meeting. So you can see on the right here, the sort of numbers that that yields, even with those parameters, even with sort of letting these districts climb up, we still come in below the 15 units per acre density target. So this is not a compliant path forward. And the main, what's really driving that is two things. One is that we've expanded the area of the Transit Area Triplex and the density is still low. So we have a larger area that is at a low density. And then we've also added a additional, you know, quite large sub-district that is also, you know, well closer to 15 units per acre. It is also below 15 units per acre. So the rest of these sub-districts, even though they're quite dense by comparison, are not enough to compensate for the two triplex districts that are dragging down the numbers. So with that in mind, we've done a couple of variants to kind of see how else we can come in, you know, with this general idea, come into compliance. The, the sort of, the first thing that, you know, the, these are the numbers that we want, we're asked to explore. But after looking very closely at the parcel patterns, the, and the way that the buildings were configured on the parcels for parcels that were in that 5,000 square foot sort of ballpark, the configuration on 5,000 square foot lots in the Blue Hills Triplex and the Transit Area Triplex areas were almost identical. So having different rule sets for those despite almost identical building conditions isn't really, there's no planning logic for it. So we would recommend that if there is a desire to move forward with the Blue Hills Triplex, that we bring the two triplex sub-districts into alignment. In other words, the rules that are applying to lots of a particular size in one district also apply to lots of that size in another district because of the, the sort of similarity of the, the sort of character at, at a parcel scale between the two. So that's what you're seeing here. That brings, that is also not surprisingly not compliant, but this is sort of what we would suggest as like a baseline to sort of work from. So if we take that as a starting point, and just to highlight the things that have changed here is the minimum lot size in the Transit Area Triplex and the lot coverage to match that 60% and bringing the parcel size, minimum parcel size up just a little bit for the Blue Hills Triplex to get to the highest, you know, number that we, that could get close to compliance. So this is the next run that we tried to see if, you know, without the, the Blue Hills Triplex, are we still able to get to compliance with this concept for the Transit Area Triplex? And unfortunately, it yields pretty much the same results. We're still, you know, hitting that, you know, below the 15 units per acre. And I do want to point out before kind of moving on that the other sort of collateral damage or like, you know, unintended consequence of this sort of, the modifications in these two triplex districts is what we're getting is large areas at low densities that are yielding a lot of units because it is a large area. And so you'll see like the, if we go back to option 1C, which was the final option we presented at the last meeting, this is coming in quite close to the number of units that you're required to hit as a minimum. So 2,495 units comparing to a requirement of 2,461. So quite close. Once we add in the modified parameters for, sorry, for, you know, making use of the Blue Hills Triplex and the new rules for the Transit Area Triplex, we get to almost pretty, pretty quickly. pretty, pretty quickly, almost double the number of units, and we're still not compliant. So there's a, a sort of ripple effect of that in terms of the other impacts that you brought up in our first meeting, that you were concerned about around, you know, fiscal impacts, school impacts, you know, resident congestion impacts. So we're, we're looking at a much larger number if we include all of these, with these rule sets. Okay. So this is the one that we tested without the Blue Hills Triplex. Again, still not compliant. So what we then did is testing a version that does not have the Blue Hills Triplex, and does have the transit area, but only the portion that is 10,000 square foot minimum lot size and four units per lot. And that, this gets us scraping just above the 15 units per acre minimum, and the, the unit capacity is back down closer to the compliance target. So I know that's a ton of numbers that I just threw at you, but what I want to kind of focus you on is, the options that we presented at the last meeting are all getting you, you know, quite close across the board to your, your parameters, and even in 1, 1C here, we were able to get the denser districts, sub-districts of Granite Ave and Milton Village, Milton Station, and Matapan Station down a little bit. So that is, that option 1C here is, is hitting on quite a few of your priorities. And then the other one that we think is, is sort of giving you a good option here is 1G, which is the one that we just looked at, which modifies the transit area to prioritize the fourplex and 10,000 square foot lot concept, and drops off the smaller lots in that area to enable us to get to a, a sort of both a smaller area and a higher density that's closer to what we need it to, to do. So I may be going to stop there for a moment. I think, I'm just going to check, I think my next slide is actually a little bit out of date, so I'm going to stop sharing for a second, and if anybody wants to jump in with some questions, we can pause there, and then we have some, some build-out visualization that we want to show you to, to help sort of frame the conversation more.
Just have two questions. Really thank you, that was really helpful. And thanks for looking at all the things that we suggested in a week's timeframe, so I really appreciate that. I wonder how many properties in that district, I forget what it's being termed now, that are 10,000 square feet? How many properties are in 1G?
For the, yeah, let me take a look at that, jump back up to... So there's a total of 272 parcels in this, like, sort of, we were calling it like, almost like a necklace, I think Tim coined that, it's like, the 10,000 square foot necklace that connects the two station areas. So 60% of those 272 parcels are 10,000 square foot or above, so that would be 164.
Okay. And then can you go back to the table, which shows the parameters, let's just say 1G? So I'm kind of, I'm curious about the, the Milton, the Matapan, and the Granite Ave. Granite Ave has a six-story building, and I'm concerned that we are prioritizing using more lot coverage and less height, where if we could match the heights that we already had, at Matapan Station, it's a six-story building as well. So if we went six there and we reduced the lot coverage, so we could get more green space, that, that would more similarly match what we have now. But I don't know, how would that affect these numbers, if, if at all?
So I think there's kind of like, for all of those, it can be kind of like a, like a balance point, where you're not yielding like more benefit, because there's like, you can only shrink the, the, you know, the building footprints down so much, but like, generally speaking, the concept you're talking about has a lot of merit. If the, the main things you're concerned about are like site plan, open space, you know, the relationship of the building to the street, and like preserving environmental sort of constraints that relate very closely to the site plan, then giving a little bit more height and having some more constraints at the site plan, sort of ground level, could be a good fit. Matthew, if you have kind of more to add there?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're increasing height, reducing the building, for any coverage, it might be a little bit of a wash. And my sense is that we're tinkering a little bit with those areas, and I don't think they're going to push the model hugely in one direction or the other, but I think that makes sense if you're comfortable with that height there.
Yeah, I would, I would think that I'd rather not change the capacity, but make it a better design solution there with that suggestion, but... And I, I think Milton Station, maybe not three, maybe not six, but maybe four to five. But otherwise, those are my questions for now.
My comment was just to correct a statement you made, that you said, these are our priorities, but I just want to correct that, it's not my priority.
Understood, yeah, probably just saying that the things that we were asked to study in prior detail.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah, heard.
I understand, but it's not...
It's, it's never, you know, can't speak in one voice as a group, so appreciate the distinction.
And then just, we had a resident who dropped off this packet. She, her name is Eileen Franklin. She lives on Cortland Circle. And just for the record, now that we're here, she was voicing her opposition to the Granite Ave. So she dropped off a packet just to compare what is being built at the Quincy Hospital site. So the Quincy Hospital site, there's 445 units on 15 acres, and she attached a photo, and that's a photo of something that I personally am not in favor of seeing on Granite Ave. So you're...
This includes two Granite, though. Her math doesn't?
Okay.
The, the whole district is two Granite. I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak for you, Zoe, but it's two Granite as well as this parcel, so it's not on this little parcel, so.
Okay, so, but that's just, I wanted just to recognize that she dropped this off?
Absolutely.
And she's not here to speak during public speech? So that's why I kind of wanted to say.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, I'm glad that you shared that with us. This is the, I believe what you were just referring to. So this is the, the sort of, the most obvious Granite Ave parcels, that sort of abut the sort of small residential community right here. And then we are also including, I believe this is the Two Granite Ave, which is right at the, the town border.
So my comment then, would, would that allow you to have two Granite Ave, have six stories, but the other Granite Ave have four stories?
Yeah, because you have stuff.
Can we, yeah, can we change that? I, I was...
I believe we can. Yeah, you can, I think, create different rule sets, as long as they're touching one another, and collectively, the, the sub-districts that touch one another are at least five acres, which this combination is, is five acres, not more.
And the other thing I forgot to mention that she said was, it stated that it's 15 units per acre, and at 12 acres, that would get you the 545 units. That would get you 180 units, but on this, it's proposing 545. So she said that they could be comfortable with closer to 200. They are not comfortable with anything over 200.
On that site, yeah.
Or the whole, the whole area.
Is your understanding that she was speaking specifically about the, the primary, like, site here? Like 200 on this site is where their comfort level is?
I didn't get that answer. She, in her photo, she included, included both parcels in the photo.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Zoe, what's the total acreage of, of all of the Granite Ave parcels?
Yes, that is, it's 13.7 acres.
Do we know how that breaks down? Do we know how many acres are...
Between the two?
So the, the middle parcel is 8.2 acres. The Legion Hall, I think, is 2.1-ish, and then the...
You said 8.2 acres here?
I'm now down further.
Granite Ave is, I mean, two Granite's.
There you go.
And then, just so that it's easy for people to understand which ones which, what's... How much is this one?
I think it might be like 2.1 or 2.2.
And remind me, what's the, what's the, the separating those two lots, the 8.2 and the 2.2? What's that?
That's, that's a right-of-way, but it's probably just overgrown.
It used to be part of that Granite Railroad right-of-way from, I learned this from the CPC meeting, because there's a proposal right now, anyway, just, there was a railroad right-of-way, you can, it follows those trees. You see that green there? That's where it was. It's a probably a road now, but that was where the rail used to go.
No, it's, it goes out to the radio station. Have you ever been out there? It's wild.
No, but wasn't, I, I understand from Kathleen O'Donnell, who did some legal title search information, analysis on this, that this was just a, sort of a part of the rail.
Yeah.
This piece, that's separating the two.
Railroads are notoriously good at holding on to their property and not letting anything happen on them.
So is there bike path potential there or anything, or?
We're, we're trying.
We're trying to figure out.
Is that what we're trying to do?
Trying to figure out what's going to happen with that, yeah. So I think in the, in the test analysis they did, they, they didn't cross that with the building.
And I do like lowering that height, like making that four, a four-story, and then six-story, where it's further down and further away.
Instead of six there, that's the...
And it's already six existing there.
Yeah, that, that area, I, you know, that's just my point of view, that's the area of all of these sub-districts that I'm least comfortable with. You know, you drive down, and I drove through, what do they call it? Ashla Park now, I think, is what they call the old Quincy Hospital site. When this, when this resident, Coyle, it's right across the street, she knows that this is what they'll look at, drive out to Coyle, and you're going to see this. It's very un-Milton-like, you know, when you consider what, what Ashla Park is now.
I haven't seen this, but did you do further test analysis, Zoe, on these sites? I think you said you had, so maybe we should see if they did.
Yeah, we can jump into that. I will just quickly to, to note, and this is not to, you know, I understand what you're trying to manage for Granite Ave. Right now, it is one of the things that's helping to bolster your numbers overall, so just understand that if, you know, if we're bringing the, you know, even if we put it up to like six stories at the Two Granite Ave and bring it down to four stories for the, sort of this more southern portion of it, that will probably still, you know, overall be a lower density, because this is a much larger site, so putting this at four stories and this at six stories. So you're still, but you're probably going to need to find other places where you're willing to do a little bit more density in order to bring the density down there.
Zoe, can you go back, because I don't think Granite Ave was that, was it at five?
Yeah, it's at five currently, so.
Okay.
So, you know, if we're bringing the majority of the site down to four.
I see Matapan can go higher than 3.5, if that isn't, I wouldn't like to see 70% coverage, though. But, and Milton Station, just because we have taller buildings there. 88 Wharf is already six stories, and Unquity House is already six stories.
What about, I know it's going backwards, but what about going back to Brush Hill Road and taking a second look at Fuller Village? And trying to change some of the design parameters to get more density there?
I feel like we're going to continue to add and play with these districts, we're just, we're going to never get done.
The issue with Brush Hill Road is to, is to get to a density that helps instead of hurts, then you're, you're getting back to the same thing that we just kind of talked about with like that, that Brush, that, that Blue Hill Triplex district, where now we're almost more than double the number of, of units that, that we're required to do. You know, that was what we encountered the last time, where even at a relatively low overall density, there were still 1,100 units down on that site, and that was getting us 10 units an acre. So to get up to above 15, you'd be talking about, you know, greater than 2,000 units, if not 3,000 units on that site alone.
But didn't we talk about just breaking away Fuller Village and looking at that? I could have swore we had this conversation two weeks ago and it never happened? And we were going to change our design parameters not to do townhouses and to do less open space, but to take advantage of the existing units that are there, and do a different style of architecture or something to get us more density? Especially if we're talking about reducing Granite Ave and looking to make it up somewhere else. I still think that's a prime site. I know it never happened, but I'd love to see it happen if you guys are on board with that.
They could go taller. Could they go taller?
Brush Hill, I mean Fuller Village?
Fuller Village.
Just a whole separate building somewhere, you're right, a little taller.
It's the question of, and I'd like, so, you two, they've been working with these models a lot now, is it going to put us in this position of zoning for 4,000 units instead of 2,461? I don't think anybody, if you're thinking about the fiscal impact of the number of units, I don't think we should be trying to achieve that many more units than what we're required to.
Well, no, I'm not saying go to 4,000. I'm saying as you add in Brush Hill Road, you would reduce Granite Ave to keep it around the 2,500.
Yes, I think, we, we wouldn't be able to like answer for sure without running it, but I, you know, I think that, you know, broadly speaking, Brush Hill Road is a, is comparatively to what the district's looking at, is a large area. Even if we, you know, if we, I know you're talking about just doing like, basically like one of the three parcels that we initially like studied as part of that.
Right.
So even with that one parcel, it's still comparatively, it's quite a large parcel. And so to get that to the densities that we're looking at here, which is what we'd need to get to, to like bring up our numbers overall, as in the, the density number, the one that is giving us the hardest time getting to that 15, we will probably be looking at overall more units, because we're adding more area and trying to get to a higher, you know, maintain a 15 units per acre density. So we need to get to something that's a little bit higher than 15 on that site. And, you know, even if you look at, you know, 15 units per acre over, you know, one of our smaller sub-districts, you know, a five-acre sub-district, we're still adding, you know, quite a few units. So it's just, I think it's, it's, it's a, something we can continue to test and, and look at variations, but like broadly speaking, this whole thing is just like a balancing act, and there is like, if you're going for, you know, a lower, you know, a lower density across a larger area, you do, the byproduct of that is more units. Then you're, that's your, you're going to end up with more units in order to get to the, the 15.
So do we have to keep Fuller at 15, or could we go to 40 there? I guess I'm not following.
If we go to 40 there, you will have way more units.
So could we go to like 25, or 20, or play with the numbers till something is reasonable?
That's what I'm saying, like, we, we can, we can definitely, if collectively you decide that's what you want us to test following this meeting, we can test it and give you the numbers. I'm just saying like, big picture, it's probably going to be moving in a similar direction as in, you're going to end up with more units, and we're going to get to that 15.
So just, just, just the Blue Hill Ave at 25 units an acre? And, and so what we do is chase an overall density number that keeps you above 15 units per acre, and just apply it to Brush Hill Road, Blue Hill Ave, you know, Fuller Village, and you're just going to rack up units down there. So, I mean, I, I think where we were at the end of the consideration of the Brush Hill District, was sort of backing into a number of units that we thought was appropriate for that relatively narrow stretch of Brush Hill Road. We got down to like something like 600 units, which was, you know, double what's down there already. We got down to like something like six hundred units, which was, you know, double what's down there already.
Your audio is cutting out a little bit.
Moving my head around and gesturing so wildly, I'm sorry.
What about at the twelve hundred Brush Hill Road? Because that's a smaller lot size. Possible to look at that.
So I guess what I'd be kind of do is I think it sounds like, you know, I think we can test that for you as a follow-up to this, but like some of, like these, a big picture, the same decisions will remain for the other districts. So I think if we can get to like, you know, which of these options is closest to what you'd like to move forward with and then within that option, how we refine. So I think to make headway on that, it might be helpful to look at the urban design studies, in particular for the Triplex District, so the two that are, we've been most sensitive to thus far around, you know, being respectful of the existing pattern of development there. So is, would you all be comfortable with looking at that? And then we'll circle back to the Brush Hill Road.
Tim just said we would go from three hundred to six hundred. I mean, how do we feel about six hundred down there? It's a net of three hundred. That may or may not get built.
Five, so it's a net of two sixty.
That might not be a bad option.
I think we should focus on the work we've got, they've prepared for tonight and then come back to that.
But I think it's worth looking at because I.
I do too.
I think it's.
Cool.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Zoe. We can move forward then.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to hand over to Matthew here to walk through these. And then we can circle back to some of these questions you were just talking about. You're muted.
Sorry, thank you. I think there was a request to see some tests, if you will, to figure out, you know, in effect, once you look more closely at setbacks, building footprints, lot coverage percentage, all those things, how they play out. And particularly, you know, one parking space per unit and how they play out relative to a somewhat existing parcel. So this is, what we've done is take one or two sort of sample typical parcels from a few of these districts at different sizes to see how these parameters play out in terms of capacity and open space percentages. This is a quite typical Blue Hills Parkway buffer buildout. You know, approximately five thousand square foot lot, fifty by a hundred. We've looked at a couple scenarios here, one with a standard ten-foot wide side yard given it a fifteen-foot setback, which seems consistent. There's an option also to keep the side yards at a total of twenty feet, but, you know, each side, you know, only one side five and the other side fifteen. And once you lay out the building to get you to three units, once you lay out the parking, what we're getting to is a kind of a building and parking coverage of about sixty percent, which sort of aligns a little bit with what the model is calling. Go to the next slide. We drilled down a little bit on the seventy-five hundred square foot threshold. We looked at two kinds of parcels, one we call square-ish and have assigned a fifteen-foot setback here that seems to be about consistent with what we've sort of scanned. This also worked out fairly well. What we get to is again also actually a more, obviously a more favorable building and parking coverage of about forty percent. And if you go to the next one, this is a sort of more narrow and deeper version of a seventy-five hundred square foot parcel. There's lots of parcels that are fifty by a hundred-ish and then there's always a few that go a little bit deeper. But this also worked out fairly well. Fifteen feet seems to be an appropriate setback. Again, once you sort of lay out enough footprint to get capacity, we're at about a lot coverage of about forty percent. And then, once we go to ten thousand square feet, we tested this on a sort of largish lot, again with a more of a square proportion, looking at two scenarios. One is four units in one building and another has two units in two buildings, separate buildings. And we get more or less the same building lot coverage, it's actually a little bit less than forty percent. And, you know, I should note that if I were a developer and I had these two choices, I would probably want to pursue the one on the right, particularly because those two family dwellings would be built to a much, would be built to the one and two-family residential code. It would not require sprinklers and, you know, there's all kinds of thresholds that you wouldn't have to cross. Next slide. And then similarly sized, but different proportioned town lots, deeper and narrower. And I should note that on both of these ten thousand ones, we're setting the setback at twenty feet, which we've noticed that on those larger lots tends to be a larger setback. These also work out in more or less the same way in terms of the percent. So building and parking coverage somewhere less than forty percent. And then relative to Granite Ave, what we've done, I think maybe the most constructive is to just look in more detail at something that is comparable to the metrics that we're looking at there. One thirty-one Elliot Street, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. But we took some measurements and what we're seeing there is the sort of between five, five, mostly five stories. We're getting to about, I think it's almost exactly an acre. My information tells me that we're about thirty-eight units per acre. And through some measurements on Google Earth, I'm seeing that we've got this building and the parking area is up to about sixty percent coverage of the lot. So this is very much in line with the density, the height that we're looking at for Granite Ave. And then something that we should be mindful of, we haven't really discussed height in terms of feet. We've been discussing stories because that's what the model cares about. But we want to make sure that as we are thinking about stories, that we're keeping track of the height issue, mostly to be consistent with the way it's being measured in your current code and to make sure that, you know, when we do say three and a half stories, that we are actually allowing enough height for that to be feasible. That's a potential snag in the sort of approval process. Most of the residential districts right now, from what I glean, are set at two and a half stories and thirty-five feet. I think to go to three and a half stories, which is really a full story above that, it would make sense to be around forty-five feet, maybe even forty-six. And then the five stories that we're looking at in Granite Ave, I think makes sense to be at sixty-five feet. I've noticed that in some of your districts where five-story buildings might be allowed by special permits, that that sixty-five foot number is attached to the five-story building. So not a hugely crucial issue, but I think important because the, you know, this kind of detail will want to be in the drafting of your supposed overlay.
This is just kind of a summary of, you know, based on all of those studies, sort of our initial recommendations around setback dimensions, including this notion of kind of allowing for asymmetrical side setbacks, which is pretty common in the built fabric throughout the Boston metro area. And then plugging in those heights that Matthew just walked through as initial sort of parameters there as well. So this is, you know, as a long way of, you know, saying we're looking, we've given a sort of deep dive into the existing built conditions and we think that this rule set is quite well-aligned with like the norms of what we're seeing. That's not to say there won't be individual parcels that are outliers that have unique conditions, but that broadly speaking, these should allow for people to, you know, incrementally add to buildings that exist currently and those existing buildings would be compliant with this rule set. Obviously, can't guarantee it for every parcel, but I think there's a lot of sort of commonality across these so that we can sort of offer that as some reassurance to some of the concerns that you shared last time. And that's it for the sort of dimensional studies.
If you had a first-floor commercial, you know, if you use eleven feet floor-to-floor for residential, that might yield you, what, a nine and a half foot ceiling? So if you use ten and a half, that might yield you a nine-foot ceiling. But on the first floor of a commercial, I think you need more than that. You're going to need what, thirteen or fourteen feet? So forty-five feet, if you're looking for mixed use, might be a little tight. And sixty-five might be generous for five stories. If you want eleven feet, that's fifty-five feet. But I guess a little more discussion about those. It's not going to affect the the modeling, as you said, but when you actually draft zoning and plug in these numbers.
Yeah, and that's something that, you know, as Matthew noted, the model itself is not sensitive to this parameter. It's obviously critically important for, you know, managing what you want to see in your community, but it is something that like, for instance, we can continue to fine-tune with you, you know, while the state is reviewing a first pass.
And one thing that we, when we did Milton Village, we looked at that definition of the height because if you're, you know, you don't want to incentivize flat roofs in areas where you want a slope roof just because you've set your height limit a couple of feet too low, you know? So you want to make sure that those numbers actually work to Matthew's point.
Yep. Yeah, and there is some variation across districts in how height is measured in Milton. So it's also something that, you know, for these, I think we can, you know, help to clarify. And I think in some places it's had to the mean of the roof, pitch roof, and in others it's to the top of the roof. So we can, that's another parameter that we can kind of help fine-tune with, you know, to make sure that it's not having unintended consequences like that.
So Zoe, using Matthew's example of the Hendry's Building, which was, is that thirty-six units?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight units.
For a commercial.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking of thirty-eight, that height would be, that's a five-story building, isn't it?
Yeah, because they're parking, they're parking in that building. It's five and four because four are the landslopes, so.
Yeah, so it's four on this end and five on the end that faces Central Ave.
Right.
Elliot's four.
Right. And, and so how many of those buildings would we put onto that eight-point-two acre parcel?
I think it was like six.
It's thirty-eight units. And how many units do we have to fit onto that? I'm trying to, for myself, I'm just trying to create a visualization.
The Granite Ave sub-district, including both of, you know, all of the, I guess, four parcels technically, I think that sub-district would be six hundred units.
Right, six hundred. So I'm kind of breaking that down.
Five forty-five.
Right, because.
Eight-point-two and two-point-two.
And four-point-one, right, four-point-one down there. So what's the?
Don't forget, this is only three floors of residential at one thirty-one Elliot. It's two floors of parking on the Central Ave and three floors of residential. So depending upon the design, that, those parcels, I think, on Granite Ave are pretty flat. So it depends if they do surface-level parking, then you're talking about a three-story building yielding you thirty-eight units. If you look at eighty-eight Wharf, which is a six-story building, that actually has some parking underneath it too, but that's yielding you seventy-three units. I think you're looking more at eighty-eight Wharf buildings than you are the one thirty-one Elliot buildings.
Okay.
But that's too tall. Like eighty-eight Wharf works at its site because it's downhill. So you don't see the full height of all seventy-three units.
Well, eighty-eight Wharf might, that might work down at two Granite Ave.
Right.
That kind of height.
And it would work.
I mean, keep in mind, it's like.
The other thing you have to remember is the size of the units. Like eighty-eight Wharf, I think, is mostly two-bedroom units and they're fairly large. And, you know, it kind of depends, like they're using an average of a thousand square feet here. So the size of the building at a thousand, we don't know what a developer's going to use, but that, all of these parameters, let's say if you were doing an eighty-eight Wharf, you would be getting less units than that's allowing because your square footage-wise, you would be higher square footage per unit. So it all depends on the mix.
How many units are in eighty-eight Wharf?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
And they're double the size of a thousand, I mean, they're.
Yeah, they're big.
They're big, yeah.
That building is not, almost ninety-two, wait. That building is almost a hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet.
And I think the units at Hendry's, though, what I've heard is they're too small.
I think also like the unit size and mix is going to be mostly driven by the market and, you know, what's present. So it'll be a mix depending on when it gets built and, you know, what is sort of, what preferences are.
But Zoe, what I'm driving at is the volume of building is going to be dictated by the parameters, even though the compliance model says you can get a certain number of units. But if your setbacks and your height and your lot coverage is going to set the volume, then it's up to the developer to determine what size the market is for that. They might get fifty units in that volume or they might get thirty units in that volume.
Right, absolutely. There's a huge variability in the number of units you could get within a particular building volume based on what unit type and mix they're planning for.
I think we're better off on those sites looking at, with these parameters that you've got right now, what would the volume look like? And then, rather than the units, because then you could, you could say, okay, well, at fifteen hundred per unit, you're going to get this number. At a thousand, you get this. That'll be more realistic number of units for volume of building.
Well, you could, you know, I mean, essentially what the model is doing, the model assumes that a unit is a thousand square feet. Essentially what you're looking at is an FAR metric.
I think we need an FAR metric for sure because.
That's the only way to get kind of just volume.
I think we need a new model.
Well, there's a lot of latitude in these tools. It just takes time to test them out, I think, but.
But the FAR, back to.
Yeah, I think it's like back to sort of the base of, you know, this model is a communication tool with the state. It's not a prediction of what will happen. It's just, it's a way for the state to have a standard measure across everyone. And I would focus on like the, you know, more so, you know, the units are like a general estimate, gives you like a broad sensitivity of it, but it's not predicting a particular number of units for a parcel. So I think I would focus more on from like an urban design perspective, from a kind of like the, you know, like relationship to the street or whatever, you know, the things that you're concerned about from a character perspective, like let's focus on those more so. And then, you know, we'll tell you, you know, this is, if we've prioritized those, you know, controls on the form, the bulk, et cetera, the shape, where it is on the parcel. If we're comfortable with that, we can then tell you, okay, that's what, that lines up with this number in the model. Like that's how the model's interpreting your things. But it's, that's just a tool for communicating with the state. It doesn't mean that that's what you're going to get when somebody, when a developer looks at a parcel and tries to kind of move forward with your rule set.
So when you did those test fit plans for Granite Ave and we look at these footprints and parking lots and we said, well, that's just like a hundred percent coverage almost. I have been, in conversations I've had with Tim, I said, can UTEL just take a look at that piece of property and say, you know, what, back yourself into those design parameters? Say, here's an appropriate. Back yourself into those design parameters. Say, here's an appropriate scale building for that property. And determine the volume of building instead of starting with the volume and the number of units and saying, how can I fit it on that piece of property? It, it's another, you know, as designers, you know, that you can look at these, analyze these things in different ways. And we've got this numbers way now, and I really would prefer to keep looking at the, how you design it way rather than going back to more spreadsheet stuff, because I think it's where we can actually get a better idea if these numbers are even anywhere close to what we might get if we set the parameters from an urban design point of view. Which is what I started talking about last week on the smaller lots, right? Looking at it from an urban design point of view. So I guess.
I think we all agree with that, but we're stuck with this model. So in a normal, you know, site plan approval or a normal development, that's what you do.
But in this right now. Right. So we've got the model.
Forcing us down a road, road that we don't like, and that hasn't even been vetted by the courts. And so that's my frustration with all this. I don't like to be forced to do something. You know, your way makes total sense.
But so Maggie, what I'm suggesting, I understand about the forcing. Okay. I'm, I'm a problem solver by nature. So I've tried, I, I, I'm taking the, what I've been given and try and problem solve for it. It's like I would with, you know, client or anything else. And in this scenario, I'm finding like this tool is limiting as we've talked about. But we have something that can be compliant right now. So now in my problem solving mind, I think I want to go to the next level. This tells me on paper, I can, and the numbers are going to work. Now I want to go and test these things out more, just like I said, we, you know, we should be testing some of this out. We, because we know we don't want to incentivize tearing things down. We'd rather see some infill. I think we, this is the things that we've agreed to where, you know, you have over, you have lots that are bigger than zoning allows it to be already. So that somebody already has a right to do something with that property. And then on these other ones, I think it's more of you, you kind of back your way into it. Like if, if you said two Granite Ave, I want to test it at six stories. I want to test it with 50% max lot coverage. And I want to test it with one parking space per unit. What does that look like? How can you do that?
Yeah. So let's just test it.
But that's what I'm.
Yes. So we, I think.
So go ahead and test that. Yeah.
I think we will do that in our, as part of our next step, but I do just, I don't want to leave the room metaphorically tonight without deciding, you know, assuming that, you know, most likely that will result in a reduction of units at Granite Ave, which is probably appropriate. Given that, you know, what you want to see there, which means somewhere else, we need to deliver more units. So my question back to you is, is do you have consensus on where you'd like to see those more units? Is it adding a little bit of height to Mattapan or Milton Station? Is it allowing five units instead of four units on these, some of these lots? Is it, you know, in other words, like we, we need to give some release valve in order to, to, you know, have it read a pathway to explore things that would likely reduce our unit count.
Could we look at, could we go back and look at the Randolph, one of the Randolph Avenue, um, where the 40D parcel is, not the, um, and? Or, or Fuller Village.
I'm wondering if we, if we can.
I mean, I'm on a parallel path.
Yeah. I, I've just come back to what I said before, when we already, we have three and a half stories for Unquity, for Mattapan and for Milton. When the buildings there are bigger, if you made those five, right, you, Unquity make, or Mattapan Station make six, because that's the building that's there now. And what this is allowing is just a handful more than what's already there. And it's a, it, it's an area which I think could take some more units on that property. And then if you think, yeah. And then if you think about, um, maybe extra space storage, where it's up against the Baker Chocolate Buildings and it's got 88 Wharf, I don't know.
Can you do it? Could you do a stepped on, could that be a stepped? Because again, we've done an overlay zone and we don't want to give, we don't want this to be more attractive than our overlay zoning. And so, and, and our, the Milton Transit line runs all the way to Central Ave. Where some of those, that would not work to be six stories in, in that area. And Milton Hill House up top, you know, that, that's tall, but I think, um.
So you're talking here about like these, these parcels having a different standard than these ones.
Extra space storage would make sense to have six stories, but the rest of that area would, does not make sense.
And then maybe the thing, I'm sorry, one last thing on the, um, what you said about the five units in that new triplex area. Can you look at it if you had 15,000 square feet or more that you could do five, but 10 to 15 is still four?
Yeah, we can create tiered structures like that.
Would give you, rather than adding another district, just tinker with these a little bit more.
I'm afraid that might start tear downs if you get that many number of units.
Maybe you go 20,000 square feet then.
I'm sorry?
Was that new area highlighted, the Columbine?
One of its Columbine Street.
Yeah. So that's brand new tonight. We were talking about that. Like I didn't think we were talking about that. That was one of my questions.
I didn't see, that was, I was going to ask to go back and see that.
That necklace you were talking about?
That's all 10,000 square foot lots, four units.
But it's in the Columbine.
In the Columbines and way up into Milton Hill.
It also comes over to, like, Franklin Street too.
Yeah. That, that absorbs.
I think that I.
And it emits the transit area, triplex area.
Yeah.
So.
Could we do a?
Well, she, she said it needed to be 7,500, I thought, in order to be compliant. Can you, 1G was what again? That's 10,000?
Those are all 10,000.
Yeah. So one, one G here, let me get back to it. So this is the one that uses that fourplex like necklace shape, um, version. And that one, um, uses the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size with four units per lot in that section.
So that had 164 parcels that were eligible.
Yes. Yeah, that's right.
If we made those smaller lot sizes, we would not have to do that necklace.
Um, yeah. If you, if you were, um, let me get back to, so this is, this is the one that includes the 7,500 square foot minimum with three units. And that one is below, um, compliance because, um, we're including a lot of parcels that are well below 7,500. And so that's driving the density down for that. But because it's a larger area at that density.
Is that because we expanded that triplex area? That's what happened? So maybe we.
Yeah. So it's essentially if we, if we, um, if we look at the, the transit area triplex that we had before, I mean, it's, it's really, it's, it's a function and part of the, the area of it. Cause it's, it, you know, with the 7,500 and three units per lot, our density for that district was 5.8, but we only had 91 acres of it. But then when we expanded it, you know, um, we then had 161 acres of it and it was at 7.1. You know, and then 161 acres at 10.8. So it's just that part of what's happening is by making our low density district bigger, it's dragging down the density for everything.
So, so I have a thought that might allow us to figure out how much pressure we can take off the fourplex. If we took Milton Station and Mattapan Station and move it from three and a half to four and a half, and then take extra space storage and go to, to a, to a height on extra space storage, probably higher. What could it, what is, what is, um, what do we say? What are we at, at 88 Wharf? Six?
Six.
So go to six.
That might be 65 feet as well.
Go to six at extra space storage and on two Granite Ave, go to something comparable in that height. Maybe go to six down at two Granite Ave. And, and maybe the, the gains that we have throughout those areas. I, I like the half because the half, I think, keeps us away from flat roof structures. So three and a half, go into four and a half, we gain a four.
I agree.
You know, so I, I do prefer halves. So if we took the three and a halves and went to four and a half, did something like six stories at extra space storage and did something like six at two Granite Ave and see what kind of flexibility we have then for the fourplex and also for Granite Ave, just to bring the rest of Granite Ave down.
So just, I'm looking at the spreadsheet I had prepared before, just in terms of some of the heights. So 88 Wharf is six stories at 65 feet to Matthew's point there. And there was a question about 131 Elliot. Um, I have it here at 49 feet. So that's probably the four story portion.
I will say that 88 Wharf though, is the first floor is, is commercial. So your residential, you only, there's five floors of residential.
Yeah. So in Milton Village, you'd want that opportunity for commercial too, right? That's what we said. So you need that little bit more height on that first floor.
What was the height that you said for, for this, for 131 Elliot? 55?
Uh, 131 Elliot was 49 feet at the four story portion. I have 50 Elliot at 46 feet, 36 Central at 46 six. I will say in my experience, 36 Central and 131 Elliot both came back for increase in height because the height was, they didn't have enough height on the first floor. And that's why I raised that issue to make sure we do it, we think it through. And when Brian Fers was a member of this board and he leased, or he, the, in development, in retail development, he said, it's really important to make sure you have enough first floor height for, for rent, for retail users.
So are we going to include commercial or do it as a bonus?
Milton Village.
We'll have a commercial. Okay. And then what does extra space storage look like? Do we assume the existing building stays because it's historic? And then they rebuild in front and that one parking lot in front. So all we're talking about is a potential five or six story building just in front of that building?
You might conceivably put some stuff on top of.
Can you do that with a historic building?
I think that's probably a 65, that's close to, it's tall.
It's that tall?
Maybe not quite.
I mean, are we, are we allowing?
Jim is going to depend on.
Yeah.
What happens with the local historic district.
Right.
Right. That we don't know.
But that's, it doesn't matter. Our zoning can still be compliant, even though what gets built via the historic might not match it. I guess.
So just, I'm sorry, just a minute. When we look at extra space storage, do we consider how many units can be built within the existing parameters of the existing building? And then say, okay, we can fit another building on the, I don't understand how that works. It was just.
We can't because the way they, the way the model works, it's assuming nothing's there. The compliance model.
Nothing's there. Yeah. Okay.
Yes. And in, in reality, that.
This is a huge building.
If there's a local historic district, they can prevent the original, the original building from being demolished. So it would.
So our potential isn't, isn't real potential, basically.
I mean, one of the things that'll be a challenge architecturally with this, that building is it was built as storage. It doesn't have many windows. So if you convert it to something besides storage, you have to make a lot of alterations to it. It would be a consideration in the historic district as well. Because you, you know, you, you don't necessarily want to make a property unusable in some sense. Up, you know, sort of functionally obsolete. So.
But somebody might want to make it into a theater and they want to do apartments in front of it and do a theater. And they're not obligated to make it all housing because it's already zone commercial, the underlying zone.
Just trying to figure out how this works.
Yeah.
So, yeah. It's, it's, I mean, the, there's, it's sort of like a, for all this whole exercise, it's sort of like holding two things in your mind. It's like, one is, is how the model works and what it's going to reflect in terms of your overall capacity. And then the second is, you know, what, what, how do you want to guide a developer in terms of the, the parameters that you're setting? Um, and that's, I think, the large part, you know, the, we do have to keep track of the model. But like, I think the majority of the conversations we're having are really about like, how are you steering the kind of development that you want and, and making sure that you're prioritizing density in the places where it is the most aligned with your goals.
And I'm also thinking net gain at the end of it, you know, what's the net gain here?
So one thing, if you went back to that district that you had last time at 7,500, could you allow the, within the same boundaries, four units on something of 15,000 square feet? And the reason I say that is there are oversized lots in the RC district that you'd already be able to do more units on than a single family. So would that help get some of?
Yeah, that would incrementally increase the density of that district. And as long as we keep the district itself relatively small, um, you know, it might be like net neutral. You know, I think it's, it's not, I don't think we're going to gain a lot of, um, because this, this area is really, um, if I jump to, uh, 10,000 square foot lot, you can see that there's, there's really only a handful in this area that are 10,000 square feet. And then if we go to the 7,500, we're still missing, like the majority of these parcels are not contributing. So that's really what's dragging down your numbers. Yeah, you'd have to drop down.
Yeah. So I think we would have to go back to 5,000.
Better back to 5,000.
Yeah. But then we're incentivizing tear downs. Like I, I think I demonstrated. And what I'd like to suggest is we get, in this triplex area, we get two maps that work. And we, we start taking more feedback from folks because we've heard from some people that they want to have a little bit larger district in the transit area to be more equitable. And, and then every time, you know, there's some expansion of it, then others want to shrink it. But you know what? If we have two in that area that work, everything else, you know, has to balance out. So that we can get more feedback. I mean, there's.
Well, I get plenty of feedback and one of the, some feedback I'm getting is why aren't we exploring non-compliance? So that's, I mean, if we're going to look at everything, we have.
Send the letter. Yeah.
But so we're kind of, we want to play ball. We want to do compliance and I feel like we have limited time. And I kind of have come up with my, my plan that I would be supportive of. And it's going by the law. And that's why I think it's really important to get outside counsel to weigh in as to what guidelines versus the law. So this whole model is based on guidelines and I think the guidelines are not going to hold up to in court. And we're wasting all this time trying to fit everything into this model and it's just not going to work and we're not going to be happy. So to, what Cheryl said is like you, the, everything you said, you make sense. When we talk about certain sites should be different and should be accommodating. And I feel like we should look at Milton Village and Central Ave and, um, two Granite and Unquity House. And we should go by the law and it's 15 units per acre. That's what we should be zoning, 15 units per acre within a half mile. And that's the thing I, this little chart, I like, um.
But you're, you're talking about the entire half mile making it 15.
So only at these sites, extra space, Hendry's, the original Milton Hill, Milton Hill new, the web mill, 36 Central, Steel and Rye, Central Cleaners in the garage, Sullivan Insurance and Mackey's, Plate Crafting Crew, Hayward Photography, Mr. Burke's Building at 37 Central, 88 Wharf, Unquity House and Two Granite. Why don't we just take those who are all in agreement, I think? I think those were all like in agreement with, that that's like ripe for development. This is where we want our development. We want, and so why, we should be, start focusing on where we want our development. And then stop trying to like force everything into this model, which is making us so frustrated. I mean, I'm so frustrated by it. And then, you know, if you, um, I have on my chart, the total, the parcel acreage, the current units that are there, the 15 unit per acre metric, and then the net new units. And then which is greater current, the current existing units versus the proposed units. And I think it's a very good compromise. I really think it's a good place for us to start. I think we need to get something on the warrant. I am really, really afraid we're going to be stuck with the, what the select won't leave us. I'm afraid that, um, we are dependent on the select board opening the warrant for us to get an article in. And what if they don't do that? They haven't exhibited a spirit of collaboration these past few weeks. And I'm like pretty frustrated over it. So I am desperately afraid. They're not going to open up the warrant for us to get our article in and then we're going to be stuck with theirs. So we need to get our own article in and the deadline is like next Friday.
I agree. I think we should commit to doing an article, but I feel like we should.
I, I think the question that you need to answer.
Yeah.
Is, is what, what happens when the state comes back and says, we're not compliant?
But we're following the law and we'll deal with that, Tim, when they comes back, when they come back to tell us that.
But I, I think town meetings can be very interested in saying like, why are we going to vote for something that we know for a fact is going to get rejected? And then you're either signed. And then you're either signing on for the town of Milton, taking on a massive lawsuit against the state, or whatever the consequences of not complying are.
And that's why I think we should have both. Like, if we can, I think we should do, go forth with, with what is, meeting the guidelines. But then we, maybe we have, and we have a second option and we, we let town meeting decide. Because I think we don't want to be responsible. The select board doesn't want to be responsible. And that's why they've acted, because they're trying to make sure.
I've been thinking about this, like, the speed has really screwed us. They have really screwed the rapid transit. It makes no sense that they're putting the shortest deadline on the communities that are responsible for zoning the most. So I have kind of concluded that it's like, the state is sort of using us as a test. Like, what, those 12 towns, let's see like, if they're suckers to like do this zoning. And then they're going to work through it. And then next year, they have another 130 towns. And then we're going to be stuck with something that the other towns are not going to have to do because it's going to work itself through the court system. I believe in playing ball. I think giving them something is better than being non-compliant. And we are doing what they're asking. We are complying with the law.
So I would say I'm not as, I don't take the same point of view as you in terms of, they're looking for the same, they're looking for units. We need, we're desperate for housing. And the price of housing is just skyrocketing.
Yeah, we all know that.
And so they're, the transit communities are probably the ones they're hoping can deliver the units quicker because they're in more convenient locations. I'm just giving an alternative, not to say that they're being cynical or they're trying to jam things down people's throats. As, as far as, I don't see the point in submitting something which the state's going to kick back and say is non-compliant when we have...
It's a state agency.
It's, but they are authorized in the law. And we've, we have received opinions about that. And I don't think we're doing town meeting and the residents of the town. We're doing a disservice if we don't deliver something that meets what we understand to be the law, which...
Which I don't understand that because I haven't been given a legal opinion.
And we're waiting on that from town council.
But I think we're doing a bigger disservice just by ramming something through with this model, just to come to 2,400. I think we're really doing a disservice to the people of Milton.
We have, we have our consultants still here on the line. Can they get some marching orders and then...
That's what I want to keep moving forward for today, but I...
So, but that's what I want, that's what I am...
Great. Let's, let's do this. Let's do this. I agree with Tim. Let's give Matthew and Zoe the direction we need to give them. We can continue my conversation, just let them get some sleep.
Yes. Can we go back to the chart that shows the, through 1G?
Previous complex. Triplex.
Yeah, because we probably have to land on 5,000 versus 7,500 versus 10,000 right now, right?
Exactly. And I guess I, I am not at all comfortable going down less than 7,500 because I feel as if that's just going to incentivize losing historic properties. And whether it's, they won't be considered historic to the same level, maybe as something else. But there are lovely properties in there.
So 7,500...
So I don't have a problem with 5,000, honestly. I just think that's what's going to work here. And I think there are ways that you can remodel without tearing something down, building off the back or doing additions.
I do too. I actually do think people will do more of that.
If you're going to go to a three-unit building, you have to sprinkle it. You need two means of egress that are separate.
You have to sprinkle the three?
Yep. And you need two means of egress. And so you're looking at, it's not a minor addition to something to do three units.
Benz had to be sprinkled when Mr. Falcone bought it. He didn't tear that thing down. He could have tore that down.
I'm just suggesting to you that if you're going to do a three-unit building, it's going to require two means of egress from each of the units and sprinkler system. So it's not as simple as you're going to do a little addition off the back.
Well, the units are going to be small. We just learned from Mr. Falcone that he's got micro-units in there, small one-bedrooms.
I think so too, Cheryl. I do, I actually do think people are going to, just from a real estate perspective, I think people are going to actually not necessarily be able to afford to tear down and rebuild all new. Because, and we know the greenest building is the building that already exists. But I think they're going to try to put in on a third floor. I know it might not be easier, but they will try to put in...
If you cap the height at two and a half stories and you do these setbacks, you're not going to have a footprint. I showed you the diagram of the setbacks. You're going to add 10 feet on this side and 10 feet on that side. It's, it's going to be not as simple as it sounds like.
But if it already exists, if it's, a lot of those are, are non-conforming. They're pre-existing non-conforming. So their height is higher than two and a half stories for a lot of those older buildings. They're actually like three, three and a half stories, some of them are pretty tall. And so I, I think they're going to maximize the, the space. I...
I think if your intent is to reduce the district to only five, to a narrow strip along Elliott Street, that goes against what a lot of the neighbors have said in that area where they want to spread it further out.
I think it's going to get spread further out as we look at these...
Further out, whether you want it 5,000 or 7,500. It depends what your goal is, is, is your goal to make that district as small as, as possible? And then you're only going to get the 5,500 square foot units or 5,500 square foot sites? And you're not going to worry about the teardowns? I personally think that 7,500 should be the minimum lot size.
Yeah.
Based on my analysis.
How about, how about this? Have we have, have two alternatives for the, the transit area concept? One that is trying to stick to the, you know, the three, the original kind of three-unit vision and trying to do a couple of tweaks to reduce teardowns. I think the thing, like, you know, the things that are driving people, that could drive people towards a teardown, which I think would, the things that you could do might be, you know, giving them a little bit more wiggle room with the rear setback. I don't know, Matthew, feel free to, you know, chime in if there's anything that you'd do differently. But I'd do that. And then also consider if you want to give them a little bit more height flexibility so that they can incorporate, you know, additions, you know, by basically going to the rear or going up, but retaining sort of the, the body of the building. And that might reduce the sort of, you know, once you have them boxed into a really contained footprint. It might also be like letting a little bit more, you know, lot coverage is a couple of, like, if you loosen your parameters a little bit, you give them more ways that they can solve for the other issues.
I think that...
I think this is, we should, we should wrap this up pretty soon. But I will say this, I think this is really complicated. Because to, to, to set it at 7,500 square feet, we're, we're choosing to protect the people that have the small lots.
Unless they want to develop.
Now, listen, let me finish. Now, while we're protecting them, we're also denying them of an opportunity to make the lot more valuable.
So true.
You know? So, you know, looking at what Matthew had, had showed us earlier for some of these small lots, I am an absolute firm believer that these will not be projects where an existing home will be renovated to add units. It's way too expensive to do that. Someone is going to sell their property to someone, to a developer, who's going to tear it down and he's going to turn it into a, a three-unit building. It's, it's, that, that is exactly what will happen with it. It's, it's not, it's so hard to take one of those properties, most of them. Most of those properties are not properties that you can convert.
That's why I advocated for allowing another two-unit building on a larger lot. Because that way, you already have oversized lots. And you're not changing the density or character of the neighborhood by it. And you're going to not, you're going to protect those smaller ones. And so if 7,500 square feet makes it instead of 10,000, and that allows us to bring down the density over on Granite Ave, then that seems to be a better direction to me than knocking it down below 7,500 for the...
This is where Maggie's point makes so much sense. Here we are picking and choosing who to apply it to and who not to apply it to. This is very different than going to extra space storage, right? And saying, let's, let's zone for something that could be built there or down at Two Granite Ave. I mean, we're going into neighborhoods and we're, we're, we're assigning to whomever you are, you know, how you'll be affected by this. It's, it's, you know, it's to the point that you've made, it's, it's not really proper zoning. You know, no one's going to argue that we need more housing. This isn't really the way to do it, you know, to go into those neighborhoods and do that. I'm, I'm all, you know, I'm all...
I think infill housing is the way to do it on larger parcels that you already have. The zoning is already for smaller parcels. Infill housing is the way to do it. If you read some of the literature on the missing middle, it's about infill housing. And that's where if the infill housing is where we have parcels in the RC District that are larger than the minimum lot size, allow them more units on it.
How much infill housing do you think there is?
What is infill housing, please?
It's when you have, your, your zoning lot is larger than what your zoning district allows so that you can fit something else in there.
So you're maxing out the lot?
But, but how much do you think there really is?
You can subdivide it that way. And the thing is, we have 7,500-foot lots in a five, I mean...
So we're already deviated from what I said. Let's go back and give Zoe and Matthew what we need and...
So Zoe, I, I, you just said, let's do two, you'll do two reiterations?
Yeah, so basically what I was thinking is, is one option of the transit area triplex that is the 7,500 minimum lot size. And, you know, we look at for the sake of the sort of the, the teardown concern, looking at if there's some parameters to loosen up to reduce that risk. The second option is one that, you know, includes the larger lots, adds that 10,000 square foot four-unit rule, but keeping, you know, potentially the smaller, you know, basically like the, if we go to, sorry, skip to, basically, you know, what we presented to you last time is the 7,500 square foot version. So that's version one of transit area triplex. Version two is the tiered one that includes, you know, a slightly larger area. I'm going to get to this, it would be, you know, like basically this one.
We need to go to the map though to be sure we're talking about the, the same area.
Yeah, so basically like, yeah, so the, I think it seems, so this is what we showed in the one...
This is what we don't want.
Correct. So I think our options are this one or this one. So this is the, what we showed you last time. This is the 7,500 square foot minimum lot with some tweaks to the parameters. This one is the tiered version that includes both the 7,500 rule set and a 10,000 square foot rule set for four units per lot.
You said that didn't work, Zoe, before? Is that...
It, in combination with all the other things, it, it didn't, it didn't help us. But I think we can, you know, we can like look at, for instance, like shaving this down a little bit. Like basically, we can do some variations on this in combination with the other parameters we're looking at. And I think we can, you know, get there. It seems like those are the two versions of this district that have a potential path forward in terms of like how you're conceptualizing it. Recognizing there's all sorts of caveats and concerns with both versions. But that, of the things we've discussed, those seem like the two that have the, the most potential.
And then the other thing I would say is for the, at least for the Granite Ave District, is to design your way back into zoning.
Yes.
Because I, I do think that understanding how that would work helps us figure out this area.
Yep. And then for the other sub-districts, the modifications that I captured are basically introducing like a tiered concept to our higher-density district. So that's the, I jump up here for a second. So doing a tiered concept for Granite Ave, six stories here, four stories here, as close as we can get, 4.5 stories here, as close as we can get. Sorry, wait, I'm missing, missing, sorry. Six stories here, four stories here for Granite Ave. And then six stories over here, four and a half stories over here. And then for Matapan Station, keeping the whole thing at 4.5. So that will give us more density.
You don't want to go higher than four and a half on a six-story building already?
The other idea is we can always go higher by special permit.
Well, no, I think that, yeah. I, I would be willing to go six stories on that if, it's already a six-story building.
Yeah. So we would extend that rule set to include these like handful of small lots here. But, you know, functionally, it would still...
What did Zoe say about these ones?
I don't think six stories on the corner.
What did you say about where you're moving those?
They don't qualify. They're not, the minimum lot size is too small. Unless somebody bought all of them, I guess.
Those are included to get above five acres?
I know, but they, aren't they the, I thought the minimum lot size for this district was bigger than those are individually.
Did we set a minimum on this site?
Right now, we don't have a minimum lot size for this district.
At one point it was then.
We might be able to though, because as our understanding of the rules have enhanced, we've gotten deeper, because this is connected to the other sub-districts, we could potentially carve out these small lots and just focus on the single parcel. It is, it risks, you know, spot zoning, you know, concerns. Because you're basically zoning one parcel. But there's, you know, that's an option to consider.
We should, we should model it for six, right? That's what you're saying.
And, I mean, this, not that I would, I mean, this has a lot of surface parking, a lot of roadway. I think you could add units here and still have green space and still have buffers to neighbors and so forth. So why not take advantage of this? We don't have that many parcels this size.
Right.
Right.
All right, that, that makes sense. Okay.
Sorry, can you just repeat for me where we landed on that?
Going to six stories.
Going to six for this.
Yeah.
Matapan Station would be six.
Matapan Station goes to six stories.
But not on the Parkway because, you know, the Parkway is not historic.
And that's what we would do.
She said remove those or tie them into the other Parkway District.
And then do we touch on Fuller Village or not?
No. We left that out.
I think we should leave it out for now.
Continue to leave it up, yeah?
My plan is to leave it out.
Fuller Village is out?
In my plan.
Let's see, let's see.
Let's see what we get with this. We need to add it back.
So we, we take advantage of the density that's already there?
Keep it on the table, but it's on the...
But should she look at it and see what she can do? Because we don't know what it, she ruled it out. It's never been looked at.
If you want to play around with Fuller Village, if you think it makes sense to try to do something over there.
Just the one lot though.
Which one?
Fuller Village.
There's two.
There's two lots.
Oh, boy.
The two lots.
You see the two? I'll say the one with the existing units. Yeah, we're losing them.
No, there's two.
Remember, we're, yeah, Fuller Village.
So there's the healthcare facility.
There's the Brush Hill Campus and the Blue Hill Ave Campus.
I think whichever it makes sense.
Which one's denser?
Blue, Blue Hill Ave.
Blue Hill Ave, isn't it? Yeah, they're original.
No, 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 that's, that's not as dense. Brush Hill's denser.
Brush Hill's denser.
The denser one and overlay, right?
But isn't, is any part of this a half-mile?
No, this is all outside.
No, that's going to have to be a five, but it's five acres, right?
Yes.
I, I, I think that's a fallback if we can't get it to work. I, I think we, we still have opportunity to continue to tweak, as I'll say, the, these other districts that make more sense. I'm not, I'm not excited about including this.
It just might take some of the pressure off.
It depends. It's a fallback, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know what the potential is there. I think we're going to need it.
Um, which, if we were to run it, which like portion are we talking about? Are we talking about this middle section?
Yeah, the one that's only on Brush Hill Road. So that, yeah, the middle one.
Is the Brush Hill Care Center not five acres?
It is five acres. It's 5.77 acres.
I would do the Brush Hill Care Center then.
Yeah, but we need the fields for...
That's not included.
Those aren't included.
They're omitted.
They're omitted.
See, I'd be a little bit afraid that that Brush Hill Care Center would actually get developed.
Well, that's not a bad thing. Make it, convert the building into housing.
I think we have everything we need to do a second iteration for you all. Or, you know, the next iteration for you all. But I want to maybe punt back to Tim for a moment, just what you need to be in a position to submit first to the state. So we, you know, this would, we were, we were targeting the 22nd, right? So that's, I'll stop sharing for a moment here. Actually, I'll just jump back to the timeline here. So that's next week.
I mean, we, we need finality on sub-districts, which we don't have.
Should we have another, I mean, I would be willing to meet next week to do this and maybe jump into talking about some zoning language just for this? I, I hate to do that.
Do, do we have, do we have, what is our status with our KG? Do, do we have, do we have, what is our status with RKG?
They're coming on the 28th. So if we met...
Will they come next week?
So we're, what we're talking about is...
I mean, they're, they've, they've baked in the 28th to their production schedule.
So if we met, we can't meet the, there's a meeting on the 18th, the 19th I can't do, but, the 20th or the 20th, could we meet on the 20th? Finalize?
I have a meeting until seven. That's an in-person meeting, so I'll have a little bit of difficulty there, but, now, Matthew, what do you think for the 20th?
Or the 21st? Is that enough time, though?
21st I can do.
Tim, find out to get...
Can't do the 20th.
So I'll, I'll be out of the country next week, which doesn't mean you can't try and move forward, but if you did meet next week, I would prefer to have something in advance so I could at least look at and send my comments, because I'll be a six-hour time difference away, and I can't guarantee that that hour I'm going to be cognizant to my comments.
Tim, we can, we can send something.
What about the, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we, we will still be possibly able to tweak this, even though we would send it over.
Yeah, you can think of it as like an, it's like a, it's like a draft checkup, and you just, you want the draft to be as close as possible to what you intend to move forward with, so that you're getting feedback on something that will be valuable to you.
Right.
I just see this as out of order. We have yet to hear anything from RKG, and this, this actually surprises me, we, that, I know I heard it last week, too, that we had this pre-adoption submission due by the 22nd. But when we sat with RKG, I don't think we outlined that we had to submit before we were going to get anything.
The preclearance is optional. It's a, the preclearance is optional, it's a service that the state is offering, so that you're not walking into town meeting completely unaware of, like, what?
Then I'd decline the option. I wouldn't, I, I don't feel we should submit anything until we really feel comfortable with it.
So the 22nd is for us in our warrant.
It's in the warrant, right?
I'm really worried about the state.
No, that, we're, we're talking about the state, I mean, the state preclearance is what we're talking about.
If you're only one shot at that.
All right, so why don't we submit the warrant is the 22nd?
Correct, we also have to have that.
Correct. So why don't we submit what the select board approved, just to see what the state says about it? They have...
I wouldn't.
No, I wouldn't.
Why, it has the districts, it has the districts that we're talking about.
Why submit anything?
Because that's the zone, I think we just need to give them mapping, the districts, and I think what, I think, let's say...
Just to be clear, you're not saying that you're going to move forward with this thing. If you submit it to the state, it's not saying that that is what you will ultimately move forward with. It's not committing you to anything, it's just giving you like a feedback opportunity.
So we can submit the maps that we have with the two, can we submit both options for the triplex area and everything else?
Yeah, we've, we did something similar, I think that, you know, it's, you basically submit like your district, and then they give you the opportunity to submit all, like, additional attachments, so you can submit additional things that basically convey that you have a second alternative. They might, you know, depending on how, you know, slammed they are with reviews, they might prioritize reviewing the one that you submit first, but there's an opportunity to submit more than one for consideration.
So why not submit something that shows this concept of the Granite Ave, the triplex area, the stations, and, you know, the kind of differences in parameters for each one of those, and, and get feedback?
Without fixed, without numbers on it? Without fixed numbers?
No, but what, Tim, so what we have right now, I think we could submit that.
Yeah, we, we have everything you'd need to submit with what we've prepared currently, you just need to decide, you know, what you want to submit.
We're not obligated to.
I know, I'm not, I'm not in support of submitting.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't submit, no.
I'm not comfortable submitting something that I do not support. I feel like the state, like, the state never moves quickly on anything. And so how come it's totally unfair that they're expecting us as a town, who are all volunteers? Like, the state has full-time employees, and we're volunteers. How can they expect us to move this quickly? I'm not, I'm not in support of sending anything to the state. I'm not supporting that.
Well...
I mean, the problem is, then that gets back to the town, and we've gotten something that the state likes, but we all agree that it stinks.
Well, you know what?
But the towns, that's the thing, then, yeah, exactly, that's exactly what's going to happen here.
It's showing them that we're, we're working on, we're working on it, and we want to get some idea whether it would be viewed as compliant by the agency that's going to make that decision.
But if the math, if the math shows them the numbers, aren't you compliant?
We're in compliant. If that model spits it out as compliant, it's compliant.
The model is a communication tool, they are going to use that to evaluate compliance. It's a, it's a way to reflect to them in a standardized way, the results of all this, but they're going to be going through that and looking for, for instance, are you introducing parameters that are very clearly intending to block development and create an infeasible pathway in order to prevent people from using the byright zoning? So they, there is still a human element to the review, and that's why you need to hear their feedback in order to be fully informed. It's not that, you know, obviously you can proceed without it, it's not required, but it gives you a mirror to say, is the state seeing this the way we're seeing this, or are they seeing it differently, and what are they concerned about? And then you have that information to work with. So it's, it's, yeah, it's just an additional information for you to use in your process.
Yeah, and I, and I would also, while we are, are putting numbers in a model on a map and it's spitting out a number that's just barely meeting the numerical target, I think because Milton seems to be trending that way, it's very prudent to get the eyes of the state on it, because they will be scrutinizing it a little bit more carefully.
We're not locked into doing anything.
What do you mean trending that way?
Very technical model.
Well, just in terms of, of the, the direction that we've been going is pushing a little bit towards, you know, getting much closer to the, the minimum number of required units and density. I'm anticipating that, you know, we're not going to have three times as many units as, as the minimum is required. It seems to me we're going to be closer to the boundary of compliance, and I think that's why it's prudent to get the state on, to see, just to make sure that they're not seeing some glitch or some other, other sort of problems.
Yeah, but, but...
I don't see any harm to sending it in.
You know, just, I know, but, but who would submit something with three times the amount of units? Are you suggesting that, I mean, even the pro-density people wouldn't do that?
Arlington.
Are they?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, every, every community is different, people are approaching this in really different ways, and I think it's just, it's to Matthew's point, because we're choosing a directions thus far that's getting us very close to the, the minimum compliance, that's, that's probably going to, you know, justify a little bit more scrutiny to make sure that we're not, you know, grazing it a little bit too closely.
You know, I, I have to say this, when this doesn't work, and maybe we don't realize it for five years or 10 years, the state is not coming to the rescue of Milton, we will live forever with whatever doesn't work. I, I've been talking about the implications of this for a long, long time, for probably nine months now. We have no idea what the implications are. We're going to have 1,000 new units. If we do Granite Ave and the 540B projects, we'll have 1,000 units here within five years. I would guarantee you that, 1,000 units within five years.
You're guaranteeing the state's going to sell their property within a couple of years?
You think, you don't think...
Yes.
They're the ones that want it.
They need the money.
Pete Jackson asked me the same thing. They're the ones that want it. What, do you think they're going to block it? You know, it's the fastest way to get anything developed yet. Then we'll be talking about building another school. And there'll be another $100 million worth of debt that we'll be worrying about. We're not even talking about that stuff, we're ignoring all of those things. And you know who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers.
Those new units will be occupied by taxpayers, too.
And RKG said it when you were saying last time.
Not enough taxes.
Yep.
Absolutely not.
Let's, let's end our meeting. It's almost 11:30.
And we need to get...
It's not, to me, it isn't.
So we're going to send this letter, or we cut these guys loose?
We know, we're going to... All right, so I think, that we will...
I think we're all set, I think we have what we need to...
You have what you need, okay.
Do a next step. Yep.
So, all right, thank you all so much for...
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Zoe.
Thank you, everything.
Thanks, John, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good one. So long.
Okay. It's a tough thing. All right. All right, so I do, and I think the only concern that I have, Tim, and maybe you can advise on this, is because the 22nd, the warrant committee needs to know what articles are coming from us, I think that we should commit to submitting a zoning article, and we don't have it yet, that's why, I know you want to talk about zoning and get, we start getting some meat on the bones, you know, and the template, that we, we have the template. I think we need to have some sort of vote that we will be submitting an article, and that Tim can let the warrant committee know that, that an article is coming. So is that appropriate, Tim? Because I think we do need to...
A separate article from the select board, in fact?
I think at this point, we, where our goal is to have our own zoning article, and that the select board will replace, they'll remove their article, and, and our article will be the one that will move forward.
When's this going to happen?
So we need to have a, we need to have a placeholder, technical placeholder, the warrant committee.
September 22nd, is it?
September 22nd. We can pull it back, we can, if we are not ready, we can, if we don't have anything, we can pull back what we're, what we're going to put forth.
Well, I don't understand why, why we would go that path, instead of letting them know that there's going to be an article, there's one from the select board. I, I don't understand why we're not going to look at the select board one before we make a decision to do a different one.
I think we do have to do, I think we have to have both.
It's written by our town planner, based on, he's the professional, and if the select board didn't write it, and it's based on the model bylaw, it, it just seems vindictive to me to, to the select board to somehow try and do a different article.
No, I think that's my, my understanding is that that's what they want. They want us to do an article, but because we didn't, they were concerned that we would not have an article, they wanted to make sure that something was going to be submitted before December 4th. I think they're going to be happy that we are saying...
Has everybody read the article that was, was voted on?
But there's not design guidelines in it, there's not what we want to be...
Cheryl, this, my personally, I have so much work to do to keep up with what we're trying to do, reading another article? I don't have enough of time to read another article, you know, and I...
It's the model bylaw with the edits made tailored for Milton.
Isn't it our goal to put our own article forth, the planning board?
I understand that, I'm the only one that's read it, from what I just asked, and so I, I can't imagine why...
We just got it.
No, 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 we've had it for, we've had it for a couple of weeks, and so my point is, how do you make a decision that you're not, that you're going to do something different if you, if you have something that you're starting with?
Because we started.
I just have a different point.
We have yet to finish the work that we started, we've been working on this for months. Why can't we finish our own work and do it independently and come up with our own article? And give the residents two options?
You're going to write the zoning from scratch? It's, it's a daunting task if you think you're going to get that done in a week.
The select board seemed to get it done.
No, we're going to have a town, we have a template.
Because we have the town planner do it based on the model bylaws.
Here's my request for closure.
So is he going to do it for us, too? That's what I assume.
No. We, we are going to write zoning. We want to have a legal consult, but we need to have a placeholder for our own article.
Yeah, that's what we should do.
Right here.
Yeah.
Who's writing it?
So we'll, we'll have the template with something that we like better with, with guidelines, with, you know, we've already just discussed setbacks, there's no parameters to the, I think the select board, this is what they want, is to see us really move forward on, on writing, and having a zoning article.
Tim, is that your understanding with the select board?
Yeah.
That they wrote, that they wrote this article just because they thought we would not do it in a timely manner, and that our article would replace their article?
I think they're counting on you to add your input and edits to, I mean, I, I don't think the anticipation was starting from scratch on an entirely new article. I mean, the, the article that they sent you has dimensional parameters, it has development standards, it has site plan review procedures, it has all of that.
So you wrote that for them?
Yeah.
But they didn't, you know, we didn't hear them talk about it for 10 seconds in that meeting. Have, have they gone through all of those with you, or is it just your work? If I could finish, is it just your work independently?
It's, it's, so they've, they've read it, I don't, I mean, they've, they've talked about it as much as they talked about it, but I think the whole point was, here's something for the planning board to work on, let's give them the time to work on it in anticipation of a December 4th town meeting.
Can we spend, instead of five minutes, more minutes talking about that, put it up on the screen, and you can run through it, and just to get the idea of what's included?
I just thought we just needed to have a, and this is not, I think, I think what we're ultimately doing is doing sort of that, but, but what if they don't want our changes, you know, I, I just feel like I want for our work to be our work.
The meeting I saw is that they discussed it for about 15 minutes, turned to Tim and said, which option do you like, one or two? And he said, I can't choose between, you know, which child I like the best, and I just said, okay, one.
So let me just make a comment about other zoning.
I understand.
So Ned Corcoran said earlier that it was a planning board article for the memory care. It was only a planning board article after they submitted it as an article, and then the planning board decided to, to make it better by working on it.
And it became our article.
But we took what he started with and improved it. We did the same thing for Winter Valley.
How long did that take?
We did the same thing for assisted living when it was over on Randolph Ave. It's going to take a lot less time than starting from scratch.
Okay, but how long did it take to do one article for the memory clinic?
I don't remember how many, how many meetings it took.
It took you three years to do Milton Village. We're doing five zoning districts plus a transit area in three months?
Not even three months.
And I, I have a hard time believing we're going to put out a good product for the people of Milton. I know we're not going to.
Okay, so all, there's no, I don't think there's any harm in us wanting to put an article, and I think it's, it's not going to, it might not be much different, but it, but it might be different, what we are, by what we're doing, that we're improving. I just think it should be our, our own work, and that, that we, we've been working on this all along. We can pull ours back, or the select board can pull theirs back, but I think it should be our work.
And having read it, what I will tell you is, the work that we're doing will inform that where the, which, which districts there are, and it only is going to refer to a map, it's going to call it Mattapan Station, Milton Station, Triplex Station, and each of those zones has a chart where you're going to fill in the dimensional standards, so it's a 10-foot setback, a 15-foot setback, and then it's going to have things about the design standards, that has standards in there. Right now, the standards and the site plan approval process do not apply to the triplex district. One of my comments was, that should apply to every district. But the other things about it, there is standard zoning stuff, there's nothing that we need to recreate about that. So the part that we need to really spend our time on is the map and the dimensional standards.
Correct, but I'm saying the.
And adding any, so we don't need to spend time writing the rest of it.
But everything that the, everything that the select board put into their article was information that we have been developing, that we have been working on. Why would we abandon our own process?
It's just a turf thing at this point, in my view. It's not about what.
It's not, we're being, we are being consistent. And I, I think that they're gonna be happy that we have a really good article, because that's what we all want for the best of our town. This isn't.
I don't know how we're writing it when only one person's even read what we've got so far, so I don't know who's writing it.
Because we haven't gotten to the point where we're writing the zoning.
I didn't even think to read the select board's article. I thought we were working on our own stuff. I didn't even.
That's just not.
Well, let's, let's, let's not wander, let's not, let's not wander into criticism of each other. This is hard enough as it is.
So it is, we're just, we're trying to do.
My other question is, if, my understanding is, you can't alter somebody else's work, or else then it becomes out of scope.
That's, that's not been submitted to anyone but, but to us.
So that was my concern.
They haven't even opened the warrant yet. So it's not an article yet.
I just wanna make sure we have a placeholder. We can, we can, we're, I think we're all agreeing, we're all sort of doing the same thing, we're working with the same template. We might change that template slightly. I think we just need to, I would like for us to be committed to trying to submit an article. And if we can't.
I'm committed to that.
I, I think there's nothing wrong with our being committed to writing what the, what we want is a article for, for the December 4th town meeting. So we're working and, you know, we're doing the best that we can. It just, we may, you know, and we will have a public hearing on the, on the select boards, but.
So we're going to confuse the public by having two articles?
No, well, that's why, I won't go there. But we are committed to writing a zoning article.
I think we should work on the, and edit the article we've been asked to edit, and have one article too, so we don't confuse people.
I disagree. I think we should have our own article. If there's good information in there that we wanna use and make part of ours, we'll do that. We'll do that. There's nothing wrong with that. If they have something that they've prepared, really, it's Tim's work. If there's some, if there's some parts of what Tim's prepared there that we feel should be ours and we should use it, we should use it. I'm not interested in recreating the wheel. But I am interested in being the planning board. And this has been our issue. And if anybody got out of their lane, I don't think it was us.
Who's gonna write the article? Who's volunteering?
We have, Tim is, Tim, is gonna, not to put the template in.
I'm happy to do what, but you like, you're gonna have to explain to me how what you wanna do is different from what's already been done. Because I already wrote an article. And so like, I need some direction as to what.
We already have a lot more information that I think we can put into that. And then we will have a, a legal, we will have an attorney look it over and maybe make changes, additions, you know? We're not reinventing the wheel. But I would just like for us to pursue our own article. And if there's a motion on the table to that.
I make a motion that the planning board supports creating our own article.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Yes, and, yes. And that we have a placeholder at the, for the warrant committee to know that we're working on something. And I think that something that the select board is gonna really think is a really good piece of work, and maybe, maybe a backup, maybe a second option.
So they're gonna need that though, for, or around September? That's, that's a week, right? September 22nd is a week?
That's next Friday, so we need a meeting next week. So let's finish our motion first.
Okay, finish, right, second.
I second it, it's, now we're discussing it, right?
Yeah, we're discussing it. So are we committed to writing an article by next week? And approving it?
We don't have a map that is, you're, you're basically, if you look at what they've done, the, what Tim wrote is based on a map that was from a couple of meetings ago from you two, right? So they took a point in time and said, we're writing the zoning based on that. Have you picked a point in time that you're gonna write the zoning around? We haven't selected a map yet. So that's the first thing. You don't have zoning without a map.
That's why, I don't think we have to have the exact zoning language, Tim. Is that, we can let the warrant committee know that we will be submitting an article? We don't have it quite yet, because I agree that we have to have some specific maps, but that we, we let them know that there will be an article forthcoming, is all I'm planning to do at this point.
And as far as comment, I'm going to comment that I think it absolutely makes zero sense to have competing articles with the select board. So I'm, I support us working on an article. I don't think it needs to be a separate article. So I think it's unfortunate that we're taking this path, and I feel unfortunate, it's unfortunate that I'm gonna have to vote no on it. Because I don't, I think it's just trying to compete with the select board. I think it's a wrong message to send. And it's, it's gonna just put the, our planning department having to duplicate its work instead of working on the things that really need to help advance this. And I, I just, I don't think it's the right direction.
If only we had more time.
I know, but, all right. Discussion, all right.
How could we get more time?
All in, in favor of the planning board continuing to work on our own article? Aye.
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 Opposed? No.
No, okay, all right. We're gonna keep moving this forward. And so the next, so Tim, I'll follow up on a conversation just on that, on, you know, because we do need to finalize these districts very soon, so.
And can I ask you all to read my comments on it? Because I did spend time reading it, and I think you owe me the respect of reading my comments on it.
Oh, and we have to have a public hearing on those, too. So it's.
On both articles?
Yeah, whatever, we're, we do have to have a public hearing and comments, because I, as well. Tim, the question is, should we have a meeting next week? But you're out of the country, so I think you should be part of that. So I think we'll put it on for the 28th to discuss some.
How are we gonna get an article until?
We're already passed.
It doesn't, I don't think it has to physically be an article, but I think we have to let them know that there's an article that will be coming.
I think if they read this, this select board article, they get the gist of it. I mean, it's, you can, again, you're gonna say that it's a planning board article, but if you wanna give them a heads up of what they, what they're gonna be contending with, Tim has already been to the warrant committee. He's already talked about it. He can show them maps and say that this line is, in the transit area, is moving here or here a little bit, but these are generally the areas.
Yeah.
It gives them something to start with. And as far as like, if, can we talk about the overall schedule? Because if we have a meeting on the 28th, but we don't have one until the 12th.
So we're gonna have RKG.
So it seems like the first week of October would be another good.
I agree, that fifth.
Week to target a meeting. My understanding is the warrant's gonna go to press, what do we say, like, third week of October? So if we said we have a meeting on the 5th and the 12th, maybe even we have one, you know, the week of the 16th. Just if we hit three weeks in a row, just, well, the 12th is gonna potentially have a lot of other things. So if we have at least two meetings dedicated to it.
Yeah, I agree.
So schedule something for the 5th, is what you're saying, right now?
Yeah, so, Tim, does that work for you, though? October 5th, okay, all right. All right. So we'll add that meeting, and then we'll have the 12th as well. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, so we need to quickly wrap up this.
And we can't meet next week at all, because Cheryl's.
Cheryl's away, and I think, yeah, as part of the zoning, and, and everybody can look over sort of that document, and we'll be prepared to, you know, sort of look and. And I don't know, did you share attorney information, any of the attorneys with Tim that you had?
No, because I was, I was writing a scope of work, so I can send that to Tim. I wasn't exactly, I took information off of the scope of work for the consultants. And so I know we only have like 15 minutes before midnight, and I really wanna get voted on this letter. So in my opinion, I thought that a scope of work would be one to get a legal, to provide legal analysis and written opinion on the validity of the laws defined in section, you know, 3A, as it compares to the guidelines. Please provide legal analysis and written opinion of how they compare and contrast specifically regarding enforceability as it applies generally to the Commonwealth and specifically to the town of Milton. Legal opinion number two is to draft appropriate zoning language based on the resulting determination of districts' guidelines, setback, design standards, site plan approval as directed by the planning board. And then possibly begin discussion.
Do you wanna just share that with Tim and just give that with Tim? Tim probably also has some language.
It just says the law, you know, but I still have.
For reaching out to, for.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to run this through the town administrator. Because it's, the, the select board is who engages legal counsel for the town. So I don't know where this fits into our relationship with our own attorneys and how we're supposed to go about procuring legal counsel. So that's something that's just gonna have to just go straight to Nick's office.
So when, for writing zoning?
I mean, it's, I, I think it's one thing to get sort of assistance in terms of, you know, drafting zoning. I think, I think it's a different thing to ask for a legal opinion about the town's interaction with state law.
So I've asked town council for that?
Wait, this is, oh, I'm sorry. These are two different things. I was talking about our zoning, so.
Yep, that's one of the things.
So that, yeah. I agree that Tim should talk to town council about this. I was talking about getting somebody lined up to look at our, to look at our zoning, too.
So that's part of it. But I've asked town council now for a few weeks, and we took a vote for them to review and give us a legal memo, and they have not done that yet.
Okay. So that I'll defer to Tim. But I am thinking that we just, we wanna have somebody lined up to overlook our, the zoning, too.
Did you not wanna have Bob Mitchell look at what his?
Yeah, Bob Mitchell was one of the ones. It was interesting, I bumped into Kathleen O'Donnell, and she said, you know, Bob Mitchell's not an attorney.
I know, I know.
And I thought that it said that in our, in the proposal. I know he's written a lot of zoning, but, so I'm open to, Tim might have other sources, too. So I'm not, Bob was one of them, but.
So do you, do you want me to send out Maggie's thing to, I mean, do you, do you wanna look at it? I mean, do you wanna edit it? I mean, like, there's, it sounds like.
I can email it.
It sounds like there's elements there that may be in or out.
Yeah, because it's almost two different, maybe two different types, two different lawyers.
I don't know that we, I'm comfortable with us not reading what Maggie prepared and it not taking a vote before it goes to town administrator. So I absolutely support having somebody take a look at the zoning from a, you know, like, we talked about asking an opinion about the model bylaw and if anybody had had any concerns about that. But if we're talking about other things which require the select board to engage someone, I think we need to see what that is, but.
I agree, yeah.
So should we have Tim ask town council if they'll give us an opinion, or?
We voted on that last week.
So where are we with that, Tim?
I haven't heard anything.
Did you ask him?
I mean, Meredith reached out directly to town council.
So I'm expecting that we will hear something back. But, but maybe.
So it's just another delay?
Well, we, all right. Okay, we're gonna run out of time to, will you send that to, we can, and then, or circulate that around to the, to the board? But if we don't discuss the letters, those are not gonna get approved if we want.
Did you send a second one? You said you were working on that.
You know, I did not, I'm sorry, I, well, I sent it to Tim at this meeting, because I did not realize that he had not gotten it. But do you wanna put up the?
The what, the latest one that you?
The extension, the request for extension first.
Come up the extension, we need that classification.
Or the classic, either one, it doesn't matter which one.
Well, we got the letter from, the select board got the letter back, right? So.
Yeah.
So this is the?
This is our own request.
Yeah.
And this is actually, this is a request.
This is, Tim, this is the one you just sent during the meeting? Like this, yeah, okay, yep.
Oh, I didn't check my email during the meeting.
And I can't, can we make that larger? But that's what I was, can't see. So this is actually going to the, to the chair.
I don't see in the text, oh wait, maybe this is last message.
I read it, I thought it's well-written.
There were more, okay, sorry. I'm just gonna come over. Can everybody pull that up and read that? The one thing I realized, and this is, the first Ashmont station, station is capitalized, and I was trying to correct this on the original draft, as you go down, all the other stations should be capitalized as well.
The workstation after Ashmont, you mean, right there?
Yes.
Just one at the top of the page.
Yes, and now. I'd started to do that.
You wanted it to be capitalized?
It should be capitalized.
Okay.
And I think I.
Was there, were there any other?
I think I had, downtown, transfer. Should I redesign it? Station, that's a station right there that needs to be capitalized.
Uh huh.
So Maggie, if town council doesn't get back to us by next Monday?
Yeah, so that was, that was it. It was just the, everything else, I sort of proofread and gone over.
Should you split that letter into two, or that proposal into two?
So I think, I think the other thing that will be important to know is the distribution list, who are we sending this to?
So this is going to, because it's, I think this is different, sending it to the board of directors, who are actually the decision makers on the reclassification?
Post Philip Eng.
Yeah, everyone.
Gina Fiedaco, everyone that we interviewed last.
Gina's not there anymore.
Wasn't she still?
I, no, I know, I think they, they swore in the interim earlier this week. So whoever, whoever the.
The board of directors are.
What was Gina Fiedaco's?
Secretary of Transportation.
Secretary of Transportation. Okay.
And that was the, that, we voted last week, but I, I made some edits on it, so I just didn't wanna send it out without everybody being able to read through that.
Did we wanna send it to the elected delegation? Did we wanna send the city of Boston?
And I think we should include the town administrator, should we send it to the town administrator or Mike Zulus? I feel like we're, you know, we wanna include them.
Question from the gallery?
Yes.
Can you put up the first page that please?
It has the third paragraph in it that.
It was a, it was a section in last week's that we saw that said something to the effect.
Do you mind, do you mind coming up?
Sorry, yes.
With the microphone?
I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry. There was a section in the, one that was voted on last week, that had a clause that said, the very least, we ask you to please.
It's in the second.
Last paragraph?
Isn't it in the second paragraph?
I, I don't see it.
It's in the la, you know what, in this one, this was, it was in the last paragraph on that. I know you would put it in the second paragraph, the only, it sounds like it's a closing paragraph.
Yeah, because I assumed that people who are reading this are only reading the first part of the letter, and we need to ask them what we're asking for, in case they don't read the letter.
At the very least, respectfully ask the MBTA, okay, good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, it's, yeah, it's, right, I get, it just didn't, it sounded like awkward in the positioning of it, that's why. Is it okay to send it like this?
Yeah.
All right.
Like to make a motion?
Can I have a motion to, because I think we just revoked to, to send this. Can I have a motion to?
Make a motion to send this letter to the MBTA.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay. Okay, then, the other letter is a request for the extension of, deadline extension from HLC.
Did we have a more recent version than the one Jim most recently sent?
The one I sent to you? And I think you sent that out, everybody. And we can read through that, too, because.
Extension.
I apologize for not getting this, that I didn't work on it earlier. And Jim, thank you for.
It was fantastic, it was really a great, great letter. Nice job.
I know, I know I read it earlier, there was, there was two of them.
My only thing was where you said it's, we think it's helpful to point out that Milton has three unique challenges. I think there are four. I think that we should mention that our planning department is staffed by two full-time planners and one part-time clerk, because it seems to me that the other rapid transit communities, and I only looked up a handful, had at least 10 staff members. So I think that puts us in a unique position. And even though that, you know, our staff works very diligently and efficiently, you know, it's a lot to ask.
I agree.
About two people to do.
But do you, are we interested in getting this out tonight too? I will say thank you, Meredith. I do think that, that your changes by putting it to town of Milton and so forth and not having it be so specific to the planning board, make it something that I can support. I've, I've said I think we need more time and I think this lays out why we need more time. So I'm not opposed to the, the draft that you, you sent out through, through Tim.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is going to be another issue. Where does the planning board speak for the town? Does the Select Board speak for the town?
But it's, the Milton, I think it's the way it's worked. Yeah, it is, it's the warrant committee, the Select Board, the planning, we're all working on this together.
But we're sending a communication on behalf of the town to the state.
I see, okay. But I think it's worded...
I think we can write our own letters, right?
Sorry.
Yeah, but I mean, if you say the planning board wants to do X, Y, and Z, the planning board can do whatever it wants.
All it says is the town is working diligently to comply. And then it says what the Select Board did and what the planning board did.
Yeah. It wasn't saying that the, it just says the town of Milton is working diligently to comply with section 3A.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I just, that, that's one thing that's been kind of specifically like drilled into me that like...
Yeah, no, because I, I was very in tune to that too. But I think this is, we're not asking for anything that's, we're to stay, we are claiming, we are working hardly, hard together. So I, if we want to add, where would we add that, Tim, that we are, that Milton has four quite, quite unique challenges first?
Milton must be the smallest town that's in the rapid transit.
Trolley stops to...
I don't think you tried, I don't think you tried to fit it in there. I think that's so well-written, I wouldn't touch that. That's really well-written. I think you add a paragraph after that.
Or just even a sentence.
Yeah, a sent, well, it might just be a couple of sentences. You know, "In addition to the above, you know, our, our resources are dramatically limited, you know, to, to full-time and one part-time position in our planning department."
Should we let Tim write that line?
I, I'd actually prefer Meredith to write it.
No, okay. All right, why don't I write a sentence or add something that, to that effect? And then send it to Tim?
You know, I'm good with the letter with, and with, and with...
Or should we just send it as is?
I'm good with it too.
I am too, if we send it as is.
Maybe we just send it as is, but...
Yeah, just get it out there. We've got four minutes.
But I think it's a unique situation.
Yeah.
For a rapid transit.
Okay, so a motion to, a vote to request, or to, to send this letter, I should say.
Make a motion to send out the letter to request my time.
Let's second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Meredith, can you send me the word version of this? So I can get a letter heard.
Great, all right, all right. I'm so tired now, sitting here. Okay.
You're not going to go home now?
No, no, I think that is our, concludes our agenda for this evening. So a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?